Look at your communication with anybody in the city or any city business. They could also take your personal phone and your personal computer.
Yes, sir.
It's not off limits. So hearing that the phone really doesn't do anything except give you something else to carry. And in my particular position on that, I try to always info or currency copy the city secretary on anything I get that I respond to, to anybody if it's on a email. And other than that, I might get a text message from a citizen that's asking about an issue.
Yes, sir.
I'm done.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I had a, well, I have a question.
Could you hold on a second? Back a second.
Well, I know, but you cut me off before I finished last time.
Well, I apologize. Go ahead.
I had two questions and I only got to ask one of them. The other one is for city staff. Is there an existing mechanism to back up communications that are sent to our phones? Because my phone could fall in a lake and those text messages that are stored on it would be lost. That's just as true of a city phone. Could also fall in a lake or get run over by a pickup truck. Is there an existing mechanism for me to send like text messages to some number? I should forward those to so they're not lost via device accidents in the future?
No, not for texts. You could copy the text and put them in an email and send them an email. And the email is getting backed up and saved. And so that's not an issue. But for texts that are come to your personal device, you know, I think that goes back to what the attorney was recommending. You would need to take that, the body of that text or whatever, whatever that message is, even recorded messages you receive on your personal phone. You can do the same thing. You can get a transcription and copy it and send it. And that would be our recommendation is if it's something that needs to be preserved, probably the best way to do that would be to preserve it by sending it to your district email.
Okay.
And then it gets preserved.
Thank you.
Houston, you have?
No.
Oh, I have nothing.
Okay.
I got one more.
Sir, yes, sir.
Yeah, I kind of like, I think what David recommended is, or Bob, but I don't want a second phone. The reason is in the 10 years I've been on council, other than friends who called me, I can't, I can't think of maybe two citizens in 10 years that have called me on the phone.
Okay.
And maybe five times text. But if they're text, and I guess with my, with my phone, David, every, the NSA has all your texts. Don't worry about it.
Of course.
But no, they're, it's all backed up. So if you lose your phone, it's, it's in the cloud.
But you live in District Three.
Yeah.
That's different.
Oh, that's different from others. Yeah, that's true. So, but yeah, if, if, and I guess the, the option is we do put our, you know, I've always known that I didn't have to, but we don't have to put our cell phones in the city website. But also we could just use the city's general office phone number and people could call and leave messages.
Yeah, so that's always been a personal choice, whether someone releases their phone number or not. Past councils have issued their personal phone numbers. But you could just as easily list the city's, city phone number here and ask staff to take a message for you. You could also use, list only your city email. Those are both options.
Well, I'm going to take you guys up on the fact that you have this phone that you've had in the past for the mayor.
Sure.
And I want a city phone because I want to publish that number so people can get ahold of me.
Sure.
But I'll leave that up to the rest of the council, how they want to handle that on. I would encourage city issued devices, but if that's not what they want to do, then I would leave that to individuals.
Well, the, the reason this is on the agenda is, is because the original recommendation was to get cell phones for all the council.
That's correct.
And my recommendation to you is let's seek the council's input. But you know, just for count, for clarity, for the rest of the council, you know, the, I think the cost was $36 a month. The phone is free. It's not, you know, certainly the council's budget, adopted budget is, is capable of paying for the phone. So it's never been a cost issue for one person to get a phone. But if it was going to be every director and every, it was more of a policy question. Is this something that's of a concern to the rest of the council as far as public records and et cetera? And that's why we were trying to, to cover our bases.
Let me ask you one more question, because I never, and this might be for the chief. Y'all use FirstNet phones? You do? All of our phones, where mine are, are all FirstNet phones, all the ones I use.
Probably for 15 years.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Always used it.
Okay. I understand. It's a, it's a personal choice and I, I respect that. The, the reason I ask for y'all that don't know what FirstNet phones, they're, they're priority phone numbers for, for emergency services, generally speaking. So if a tower goes down, they get priority service back. So where an individual may lose service, FirstNets are generally.
The irony is FirstNet's supported by, by AT&amp;T.
Yep.
And here in Castroville, when I first moved here, I had AT&amp;T service and I couldn't get anything.
Okay.
It was so bad. We, they've had, the tower that's up on the hill that AT&amp;T owns has had a number of fiber breaks.
Yep.
So that's been a reliability issue. So we've used Verizon, but we do have both. We have Verizon and AT&amp;T for city services for that reason as a backup.
Yeah, the middle of the city is a dead zone.
Okay, well then what I'm, what I'm hearing is the funds are there. We'll just leave it to an individual council member if they'd like to do it, I do. And we, when we talk about that going on. I mean, unless somebody has an objection, we'll just leave it to, up to the individuals.
Yeah, I don't hear any new policy directives, Mayor.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
Sir?
Like to make a motion that the city furnish any elected officials or appropriate staff, a city issued cellphone as desired. And that the city come back to us with various ways that we can ensure communications we receive on our personal phones is kept in a, in a record format that's acceptable to the city. Don't ask me to repeat that.
All right, I got it.
And who is, who are this for? I didn't even, you said.
It's for elected official and, and/or senior.
Appropriate staff.
If desired.
If desired.
Public works all, all got a phone anyway. But if desired, basically make it optional, but that gives a funding mechanism and so forth.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion made. Second to move forward with the phones, any, any, okay, all right.
I'm sorry, I got the first part of it, but you want us to come back with what now? I'm sorry.
Let me.
With a process on how to, to manage any record documents that may be on those devices.
Perfect. We do have a policy that's, it's embodied in the contract I signed and we can easily make that available to folks. So that's good.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Right, any opposed? Nope, motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item we're going to talk about is item L, which is discussion action on meeting dates, times, and locations. Ordinance allows, there's no set time for dates and times for meetings. It just says city council will have two meetings a month. It's up to the council to set those dates, times, and dates based on a resolution. And we don't have a resolution before us, but my proposal is a multiple. One is years ago, meetings were at seven o'clock to allow people to come to. That might be a little late depending on things, but 5:30, a common thing that I hear, 5:00, 5:30 might be a little more too early. So I like to set meeting dates, I'm recommending the meeting dates be set at six. I'm recommending that executive sessions, when necessary, when necessary, be scheduled to take place. I propose three, but I'm willing to talk about four or five. Basically an executive session before the public portion of the meeting. And then I'm also recommending because this room, and hopefully we're working on it to get, oh, let me stop, let me stop really quick before we go any further. Deborah, did you get it up and running?
Yes.
It is all up? Is it live stream? Is it sound? Is everything up and running?
Yes.
Okay, I, I apologize.
In a moment.
You'd asked me to pause to reset.
We did it while.
Right, yeah, okay. Because there's live streaming in this, in the, in, again, this is one of my issues in the, the goal of open and transparency. I propose that since all boards and commissions by ordinance are open readings or subject to the Open Meetings Act, I propose that all advisory board meetings be held in these chambers and be livestreamed. So the people that are not here can actually log on and watch the meeting and not have to wait for two weeks or a month to hear a report from the city council about what happened in that meeting because they can actually attend, not necessarily physically going somewhere, but right here. That's my proposal, that all the boards and commission meetings be held here and livestreamed, that the council meetings, open part of the meetings begin at six. Executive sessions, when required, take place before those meetings. That's my proposal. And we'll open that up for discussion. But.
Are you going to go in order?
Oh, I'll go, I'll tell you what, let's go with you, Sheena. Let's, let's go this way first.
Okay, so, so for board meetings, are the boards not allowed to decide where and when they want to hold their meetings?
The city council, basically the board can, but the city council is the final authority on the boards.
Because we would have to then train whoever the rep is that, from staff city, on how to set up the, and run the streaming.
Well, I'm, I'm hopefully optimistic that we're going to get everything straightened out that with just basically a couple of switches and we're good to go. Again, I'm hopefully optimistic on that.
Okay. I think that's something that might want to talk with the, the president of each board, bring them in. And that way we're bringing them in to, not telling them, but trying to get them to come over with non-resistant to change. And then I also, within regards to if we set them starting time for six o'clock in the evening, are we going to put a cap on how late the meetings can go?
I believe, in my opinion, that a board meeting or council meeting that lasts past nine o'clock is too long.
Okay.
So I believe that once we start rolling, that we can reduce a lot of the time. It all, a lot of it hinges on preparation. If the, if myself included in the city council have done due diligence in looking through the packet of information and maybe even if they have questions addressing those with the city administrator prior, then that, it might help move things along. That's, again, I'm hopeful on that.
Okay, that's all I had.
Houston?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
You got it going, Bob?
Right now I've got feedback that this live audio wasn't working.
Thank you for coming.
Did you not believe me?
No, I believe you.
That's why I'm not here.
I didn't see you, I was seeing Bob.
He's giving a shout out to Bob.
Yeah, I was seeing Bob.
Castroville computers.
Okay. Like, a little bit of what you said is that my understanding from the OMA, Open Meetings Act, is that we have to by law provide streaming and documentation and recording of those meetings.
That I'm not going, I'm not going to answer. I don't believe we do.
We don't?
You have to be over a certain size to start requiring.
Oh, the size of the.
So our community is too small to, to be required to do.
Yeah.
For the time being, we'll see what happens.
Okay. That was my main question because I said.
I think that, again, I, I don't believe there's a requirement, but I think the city has chosen to do that by a policy decision.
Yeah, so at some point this city elected to start streaming. And a lot of cities went to that during COVID. And that's when a lot of folks picked it up. I think y'all did that before that.
And, and they stayed with it.
Yeah.
But in the spirit of transparency, if we did it here consistently, same time, same backbone, streamed it, recovered, that's transparent.
My goal is to make everything as open as possible to as many people as possible. Everything.
And would you, would we have the meetings all start at the same time?
You know, I would say, I would believe that to be yes. However, that's something I would agree to leave to the individual boards. You know?
That's all I had.
Mr. King?
Couple things. One is, I think if we make this decision on the boards, I do, because three of our boards don't meet here. The airport board meets at the airport, the, the parks and rec board meets at the.
They, they meet here.
Oh, they meet here, excuse me then. And then the.
Library.
The library board likes to meet at the library because that way they're there and they can discuss things and show things and things like that. But if we did this and moved them here, then, because Deborah's showing up at our meetings, but she's not at all these other meetings. And if we did improve things where you just had to push a button, then I think we could make that decision then. And that also gives us time to talk to the other boards.
Because there will be conflicts because we have court on a Thursday, the first Thursday of each month. And we have, I want to say it's library, I think the library, is it the library that meets on the first Thursday?
Some calendaring will have to happen for this room to make sure that we can accommodate.
Their times because I know like P and Z, they meet at 6:30, they would have to change the. If you're wanting to choose everybody made a time, I know airport meets at five. The city hall's still open at five, so that's if they came here.
And part of this is, you know, we, we have these volunteers who sit on these boards.
Sure.
Try to be as accommodating to them as possible because of that. I guess for those that still work, which is not me, but if we move this up to four or five, is that going to have conflicts with the people who still have jobs like David? And so David and Sheena.
And Houston.
Would be a, a big problem. And maybe even you, I don't know. But, and also with rarity, do our special sessions last longer than an hour? I think I've been in one that was two hours, but, but I don't know if we needed to meet at three o'clock. But if you did at five, it made us a lot of sense, by the way, to have it up front because I always feel sorry for the citizens that have to wait around as we go next door and when are we going to get back? But, and then, so, so I, I have no problem with moving it beforehand, but I think we need to get feedback from, from those that work because we really need them at the meetings. And the other thing is Robert's rules, if you read it at the beginning of every council meeting, the first motion could be basically is that this meeting will end at a particular time.
Yes, sir.
Unless voted on by all, or you know, voted on to extend it beyond that. So that puts you, now, I have been in meetings where, you know, I don't like going to midnight on these meetings or one o'clock, but a lot of times they're very, very important issues. And maybe if we did it that way, then it would give us that option and also press us to, to finalize it at a particular time, whatever it is, but still give us the option to let go beyond that. If we made that motion at the beginning of the meetings. And I think that.
Thank you, thank you. David?
All right. On starting the meetings at 6:00 PM, I think overall that makes the meetings easier to attend for a lot of people. So I think that's a good idea. As far as moving all boards to the council chambers at 6:00 PM, I would like to defer a little bit to the boards because those are volunteers and they have schedules too.
Sure.
A lot of them have picked those times because they work best for the people on that board. As far as recording and live streaming everything, I don't think that's a reasonable burden to put on the staff until we've got everything straightened out a little bit. And I think to a certain extent, it's just going to lead to more frustration if we try to do it before the live streaming equipment is really ready.
I understand.
And then as far as executive sessions starting at 3:00 PM, a lot of, not all, I'd say about half of our council meetings do have an executive session. And making a 3:00 PM meeting is going to be, that, that'll be extremely difficult for me.
Sure.
That will require taking a half day off work. A lot of people don't even have the flexibility to do that. So I think it's going to be a significant obstacle for people who may consider running for council in the future in addition to the people who are currently serving. 5:00 PM would be much more doable. But I, I don't, I just don't think 3:00 PM is reasonable. And then also, executive session is not usually the long part of the meeting. I think I remember sitting out there, listening to a debate on what the official city logo should look like, but took longer than any executive session I have sat in so far.
Thank you.
I agree with all the positive points they all made. I, I think the, the library likes to meet in the library because they show stuff going on. Airport board has a lot of charts on the walls and other things they refer to frequently during the meetings, which would be inconvenient to bring down here every time you had a meeting. And, but I see no problem in asking the boards if they might consider having their meetings here and see what they come back with. I'd like to solve our first issue, which is us, and we do have some control of what we do. And I like the idea of always having the executive session first. Many cities do that. You have to open the meeting first and then go to executive session. But when we are going to have one, have it at five and always have the regular meeting start at six. And, and I think that would work fine for us.
You may already be aware of this, but when you do that, if in a, in a rare circumstance you do have an executive session that needs to take more time, there's a lot of other options available to you.
Sure.
You leave the meeting, come in here, you.
You can recess and come back to it.
There's lots of options, so yeah.
The, the, I put three as, as a, as a thought upfront, but talking with other folks too. I don't think five is unreasonable. I just want to try to, if we have an executive session, try to knock it out first and then open the public meeting up. That's, that's the goal, the objection there. So we can, I'm trying to, my, my goal is to try to make it open and accept. It, it's always been open and accessible, but try to engage more people and streamline the meetings. That's the goal. So I, I appreciate the comments. What we'd like to do, if, if y'all are kind of on that note, kind of work with Scott and come up with some type of resolution, we can bring this back for consideration.
So for, I think just for clarity, Deborah, the, we talked about this briefly and I just don't remember. The meeting times and, and places are set by ordinance, is that correct?
No, they're set by resolution.
The city coun, hold on, city council meeting.
This ordinance in here has a time in it. If you look at the one that's in the backup, it started out at seven o'clock. I'm going to have to go back and look for it because it's by ordinance, you have to change it by ordinance.
Right.
I mean, you don't just.
So there's a, I think it's just to the council meeting, we'll double check.
Yes.
Some of them maybe it'll be changed by resolution or by an action of the council. Others may need to be changed by ordinance, but either way, we, we'll, staff will work with you.
Sure, sure, no, no, and I appreciate that. What I read on there is dates and times, two months, dates and times of actual council meetings are set by resolution. But it's interesting, if you have an ordinance at seven, why will we have a meeting at 5:30?
They changed it over here, and I'll go back and.
So I just thought I'd ask that, so.
Oh, I know, because we've changed it from seven to 6:30 to six.
Or 6:30, I'm sorry.
6:30 to 5:30 because this was to help people to get here. People did not come.
Okay.
I know there's people that try to get here now.
Sure.
In general, when they looked at it, we went back and there was not a large following after a point.
Right.
You know, we now have live stream, which makes a big difference if it works. I will say on the live streaming, if you end up, if we end up doing all the boards, we're going to have to go back to live stream and see what it's going to cost us. Because there's, I think we have, the reason when we started doing this, there was a certain amount that we could put on.
Sure.
And so we'll have to go back and see what it's going to cost the city. I, I don't know if it's volume or what because it was not, there was just a couple of boards.
Well, we may be looking at a new streaming service anyway. Yeah, it's something that Mr. Peterson's been trying to help us with, just diagnose what the issue is. And it appears that the issue may be the streaming service, not the internet, not the wiring, not the cabling, but something going on with the service we're using.
Okay, I, I guess what I'm asking for is basically, I'm not necessarily looking for a motion, but a consensus to, to, to get Scott and Deborah to work on something to start executive sessions we need it at 5:00 PM and meetings at 6:00 PM.
And if you see an executive session is no longer, we could always.
Right, for, for city council, and then we can, we can move forward to discuss more with the boards.
Because it is an action and assuming that we, it's not an ordinance, but that it's just, the term you used.
Resolution.
A resolution, can we just make a resolution to move the council meetings to six o'clock?
Sure you can.
And with executive sessions beginning at five o'clock.
We were noticed for appropriate action.
You have a discussion action on it, so we could.
But that's assuming it's not an ordinance and it's just by resolution.
Right. Yeah, okay. In my experience with resolutions, I'm, I'm used to seeing an actual resolution that says be it therefore resolved, that we're going to do X, Y, or Z and there's whereas's and all that stuff. When, in my head, when I think of resolution, I think of that. But the legal term for a resolution by council really is just a minute order or an act. Is that true?
It's a miniature.
An oral resolution is the same thing, a prepared resolution is because you have an actual written document.
Okay. If, if you're okay, we're just going to prepare a resolution, bring it back to the next meeting.
Fine. And I will let you know, like if you have consensus, Mayor, you can call a special meeting. If y'all want to start with the next meeting at 6:00 PM, that would technically be a special meeting until the resolution is adopted. But you could call a, a meeting for 6:00 PM at the next meeting.
I'd rather just go through the whole process and do it the right way.
Okay.
Let's, let's, let's bring a resolution back to the next meeting for 5:00 PM on executive sessions when needed. Okay. All right, thank you all very much. The next item that I want to talk about is item M, which is discussion action, updates to city council meeting procedures. I, I don't have the, let me look at the wording, where is it? Discussion, appropriate action to, yeah. Updates to the city council policy and rules of procedures found in chapter two, article one, section two, four of City Code ordinances. Again, I brought, I, I asked for that. So Karen, let me go and explain to what I was asking about. Is the rules of procedures, the decorum and everything in the city council meetings are basically established in the ordinance, chapter administration, under administration. Okay? There are some things in there that I, I personally am suggesting to tweak on. In the council's information, I provided Scott with a, a sample of, and we're not the county, so I provided a, a document of Commissioner's Court, what their rules of decorum are and how they function meetings. And one of the things that I was more intrigued on that is there's a form in the back where a citizen can sign up for an opportunity to speak on a particular agenda item. It's more than just setting and recognizing somebody because under our ordinance, the way I read the ordinance, okay? City council, a majority of the city council grants you the permission to speak on an item outside of citizen comments. What, oh yeah, read the ordinance. If, then the city council, majority, majority of the city council present. What I'm asking for is to create a, basically a public partition, participation form where a, a citizen signs up before that agenda item. They specify the agenda item they want to talk about. If you look at the form, the county uses it, basically are you for or against? And then you get your three minutes of time when that agenda comes up and the council's having their discussion. Any additional time requested is at the discretion of majority of the council present. Just like it is right now, it's, it's up to discretion of the majority of the council present. All I'm asking for is to create that form source so it's documented. It actually gives you the power to speak about an agenda item when the agenda item comes up. And I would turn that over to council if they have any discussion. Bob, let's start on your end.
Wow, you cut me off guard. I, I don't mind that having the form. I don't think we need to know where the person works. I don't think we need to know their employer.
Okay.
We really want to know their name, address, and you know, what their issue is, that kind of thing. But I don't think we need to collect personal information.
Sure.
The county is in a different legal situation, I think, than we are.
Sure.
Because they, you know, judges and all that type of stuff. So I would just take off that particular piece of personal information.
Right.
Job and so forth. Employ, place, employment, employment telephone.
Okay, that's it. David?
Were there, so in the, in the packet, it didn't specify a list of changes you were interested in? Is this the only one?
Really, that's about it because there's, there's, there's not a whole lot of other things that are different because of the decorum, you know, the, the chief or the police department or the, the bailiffs and the keep the order and the mayor can, you know, you have your, just like Darren did, the, the strike rules. You give everybody as much latitude as you can and then you, you have to draw the line when you draw the line. But, but you try to get as much engagement as possible.
Well, I just, I had, I didn't know if there was going to be a list or if there was only one thing. So I had had, I, I went through and come through for any.
I appreciate that.
Thing that jumped out at me.
I actually took, when I first talked to, to Scott and Deborah about it, I actually took the county rules and I s, if you see the document, it's sliced and diced all over the place of, of any reference to the county and just the city and kind of modified. So you guys got a.
I don't think I got that.
No, you did.
I didn't give you the more, I gave them the clean version.
I know, you gave the clean. I know, you gave the clean version, because it was really marked up, wasn't it? So it was just, it was more for information to show you that. It wasn't, it wasn't the, it wasn't designed to follow the county rules. It was just an example of what someone else does.
Well, if I may, I...
Yes, sir, yes, please.
So as for adding a form that someone could essentially apply to speak during a particular agenda item, not just at the very beginning of the meeting, I think that's a great idea. I think we should make sure we always have a stack of those forms at the back, and that, just like at the county level, it is, as long as you get it up here before that agenda item starts.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Second of all, I think we should remove from section E, hats will not be worn in council chambers. I think we should let, we should allow hats, I think. I think we should allow hats. Right now, the rules forbid the wearing of baseball. Well, we were asking...
He's going through the whole decorum.
And second of all, in section D subsection two, time to speak, I would like to lift a section from the Medina County rules to specify that there is no sharing, reserving, or transferring of minutes among speakers. That's a, that's a point of, that has caused confusion in the past here.
I don't understand.
I'm sorry, where's that?
If someone only talks two minutes, they can give their other minutes to somebody else.
Well...
And he's saying no.
So our rules don't specify whether they can or cannot. That's caused confusion in the past year or two. And the Medina County rules specify no sharing, reserving, or transferring of minutes among speakers is allowed. And I think that would be a good section to add to our rules as well.
I'm sorry, where's that at?
That's in the Medina County?
I know, I'm trying to find it. I'm so sorry. So I can mark it in my...
Yes, sir.
Yes. That's all I had to say. I can, I can get that to her.
Thank you. Phil?
Yeah, the, the one thing about hats, David, when I read that, I realized that, for instance, you can't wear politically motivated hats to the elections. And I assume that's why some previous council put that in here. They didn't care about cowboy hats unless it was the person sitting behind them, but it had to do with politically motivated hats, and that's why they just said that. So I didn't have a problem with leaving that in there when I was reading those. The, this form, I remember when Mayor Kelly, he had moved for a short while there, he had moved public comments to the very last agenda item, and...
That wasn't good.
He didn't?
Yes, he did.
He did.
It was noted that he was not supposed to do it.
He wasn't supposed to, but he did that because it was a way of, a lot of citizens were uncomfortable with that because they felt he was trying to suppress citizens' comments. And I'm a little nervous that this form would do the same thing, because also, if you hear, people get up and they don't talk about a particular agenda item. They, they talk, like Arnie has got up and talked about, you know, the tour to Casterville. And all, there's other things that citizens talk about that have nothing to do with our deal. So to me, just to have someone get up and talk, I don't know if we're, a form appears to, that it may be construed to be somewhat, we're trying to limit people, what they can say. But other than, a lot of this stuff in the city ordinance, I read it years ago, and I tried to read it a couple of years, but, you know, a lot of that has to do with the way city council, citizens, everybody interacts with each other. And for instance, in the county, the county judge administers the county.
Right.
We don't administer the city, that's Scott. We administer Scott, and Scott administers the city. So I've always been very leery about stepping in and talking to a particular city director at anybody without first letting Scott know that, hey, can I talk to John about such and such? And, because we're not supposed to do that by that document. So I like the document the way it is, and that's not to say that we can't discuss things in the future about little particular things. But Bob, by the way, was mayor when that thing was signed into law, so I'm sure that Bob thought very hard on that.
Long story, let it be done.
Yeah, so anyway, that's all I was gonna say.
Just really quick to answer a couple of things, and not just, just for whatever. Nothing in this stifles anybody's conversation during citizen's comments. Citizen's comments gives you an opportunity, a three-minute forum, to basically talk about whatever you want. Okay? This does not stifle the citizen's comments part. This is specific to an agenda item if you want to speak to a specific agenda item. It's not to citizens', the intent is not to citizens' comments. Citizen's comments is, line them up, let's talk. But when it comes to a particular agenda item, it's a request to speak to that particular agenda item. Because without that request, it falls solely on the city council, majority present, if they want to allow a person to participate in the conversation or not.
I guess the way I read it is, everybody has the right to speak for the three minutes.
Yes.
And we don't, so if they're not requesting it, they have a right to do that.
In the citizen's comments, yes.
And I didn't think this was to stifle people, but I thought this was to... But now, are you saying that this isn't for citizen's comments, Mary? This is for later on, which we don't do now, but you were talking about we would have actually opened it, opened the meeting up throughout the meeting.
Every agenda item, anybody that asks for that would have an opportunity to speak on that particular. So in other words, let me, let me rephrase this. A person gets up to citizen's comments and they want to talk about the 15th item on the agenda, but the time we got to the 15th item, their comments are long gone, forgot, or possibly, or maybe not. But it allows them to speak about that particular item when that item comes up for discussion. That's what that's all about. Okay, go ahead.
That was my one comment, was citizen's comments at the front of the meeting.
Yes.
Doesn't change.
No, doesn't change.
Then you have focused citizen's comments by agenda.
Yes, on an agenda item.
I'm good. That's a great idea.
Excuse me just a moment.
I agree with all my fellow councilpeople.
Yes, sir.
My illustrious friend next door here.
Yes, sir.
Made the comment about wearing hats. I'm vehemently opposed to that. Being opposed to wearing hats in the council chambers.
In my opinion...
If the roof leaks again, which it does for me, then that's not, I can wear hats, but...
In my opinion, in this chambers during an open meeting, there's a certain level of decorum that should be maintained by everyone, respect and decorum. You may not like the person, but you respect the positions. And I, I'm with you on the hats, but again, I yield to the city council.
Last thing.
Excuse me.
I know we try to make allowances for people to speak on items in the agenda.
Yes.
The last few meetings, because of the items we were discussing, it got to be one person after another, and it just went on and on and on and on. And with the form, it, at least you have the people that want to speak on the item. Now, this, if it's a public hearing, you know, they can speak longer, but this is on just a regular agenda item.
Right.
I think having them identify ahead of time, if they would like to speak to something later in the agenda is a very good idea, and having them sign up ahead of time.
Thank you. Does anybody have any objection? Call someone right here. No? Yes, ma'am.
I just want to know, if you're giving us the three minutes on a particular agenda item, is that three minutes like, gonna be conducted like the three minutes we get in citizen's comments? Because what we were talking about, being able to talk on an agenda item, may be a back and forth. It may not be, let's get up, make my statement, and then everything goes on as normal. You say something, I may want to have something to say in regard to that. A lot of times, we don't know what we need to speak to on that agenda item until we find out what you guys are thinking about doing it.
Well, ma'am, I will answer you on this one, and I told everybody, you may not like what I say, but I'm gonna tell you, the ordinance, the ordinance does not allow the back and forth unless city council authorizes it.
That's what she's asking.
That would be, that would, the form does not allow that. It allows a three-minute discussion. If there's anything beyond that, i.e. a back and forth discussion, that would be at the discretion of the majority of the city council present at that meeting.
Okay, is the three minutes a back and forth discussion?
No.
Or is it just me standing up and offering my opinion?
I just, I just answered that. No, it gives you an opportunity to make your position on a particular agenda item when that agenda item's up for discussion. If you want any other discussion beyond that, that would then to the majority of the city council present.
So y'all would hold both in the middle of the agenda item to see if you could do fifteen weeks weekend?
If you want to follow the ordinance, that is a correct statement.
Second question, or not my question.
I'm really not gonna, go ahead, go ahead.
I just want to know, if the council meeting comes out Friday, and we have to turn these forms in, and the meeting's on Tuesday, do we have to get them to you on Monday?
No, ma'am, the purpose of this, this form, and I think Councilman Murs made the reference, maybe folks didn't hear it, or it wasn't clear. As long as the form is turned in before that agenda item is called. Once that agenda item is called, it's too late. But if, if, for example, we're on agenda item two, and the items that you want to talk about is agenda item three, turn the form in before we get to that agenda item.
Okay.
Okay? That's the intent. Okay?
That's all I need. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So on that particular issue, I would ask, if you guys don't have any objection, I would ask a motion kind of to develop a form like that so they can, for citizens' input on agenda items.
There's, it's, it doesn't have action.
Oh, it doesn't, it's discussion? Okay, well, we'll bring that back.
But you can, we kind of took the...
We'll work on it.
That, we'll bring that back, because basically, that's, that's all we'd like to do, if I hear that as a consensus. Okay, thank you. What I'd like to do now is move to item O, which is dis...
Next question.
I'm sorry, yes, sir.
Are we not required once a year to review the council procedures and policies that we're now discussing? Isn't that a once-a-year requirement?
That's what I'm fixing to go to.
Okay, well, I mean, he started...
When you're good, you gotta know.
So this would basically fulfill that yearly requirement to board this. Okay, thank you.
On, on, item O, which is discussion and review of city ordinances required on article one, chapter two, section two through 11 of the city's code of ordinances. That particular section, and I'm gonna get corrected if I'm wrong, but I believe the short version of it, it requires a review from the city secretary's office of our ordinances on an annual basis and a report back to city council on those. I'm not trying to pile more work on Deborah, she has a lot going on. But it is my opinion, based on my attendance of council meetings over the last two years, that we probably have a handful of ordinances that are not current, that may be not current with state law, maybe not current with federal rules and regulations, maybe not current in the way we do things. So I think we need to begin a process of systematically going through every one of our ordinances. Some of them are gonna be great, no issues. Some of them may just be a phrasing change. But to update our ordinances to what they comply with, even, even, even the... And I don't know, the traffic ones. I don't know if they're current as far as where the stop signs are, where this and that, because every stop sign has to be listed in the ordinance to be enforceable. So I'm just using it as a term. Now, I'm not trying to overload everybody, but some of these ordinances can be farmed out. Scott, we've took, to, you can take, it's your responsibility, farm it out to certain department heads for certain areas of responsibility, and just come back with recommendations. And if the recommendation is, no, we're good to go, provide those to city council and move forward. That's my intent on this, is to try to conduct an overall review of our ordinances that are required by ordinance.
How far back?
Yeah. Huh?
There are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of ordinances. How far back?
Well, if I just went through the code of ordinances, the chapters in the code of ordinances would be good enough for me, because those are pretty much what people use unless they want to go down in the details and start, well, what's this mean? What's this mean? What's this mean? So if you did a broad stroke, just reviewing the code of ordinances, there's enough, in my opinion, there's enough issues of concern in the code of ordinances just to simply address those. And then we can go from there. That's my...
One more thing, and I know former Mayor Schroder and I had this discussion several years ago, way back in the day, when I was in office, sitting somewhere else up here. What was your name?
I'm sorry? Marie.
Tenosa?
No, no. One of our volunteer ladies pulled all of the ordinances out of the vault.
Dorothy.
Dorothy, and she listed every one of them and what the subject matter was. I saw the list, and then something happened, it never got finalized. And he and I had discussed this, because there's a lot of things that you may not be aware of that apply or that are interesting, which is, in addition to what you're talking about. I understand now what you're, what you're talking about, but it would be useful to maybe hire somebody during the summer as a student to go back through all of those, write out the date of them, and basically what the subject line is. So we have that available to us in the future.
Well, I can speak, because every ordinance we have has an index.
Right.
And it's at the front of the, each year, and it lists the date when it was approved and the subject. So I'm not sure what you're talking about, but in the middle of...
All of our ordinances have been codified.
If they're codifiable. I send it to municipal, and then some of them like the budget. I'll give you an example. That ordinance is not codified because it changes. It has numbers in it.
Sure.
So anything like that is not gonna, it may say that the city will develop a budget, and it will be, you know, a little section of it, but it's not gonna have that ordinance in it.
Right.
Now, anything that we do, of course, it goes over there, and they, of course, will, if it's one that has changed something in there, it lists that ordinance out, of course, at the bottom of it. But when this started, as I explained in this, was we had ordinances over the years. Curfew was the last one. In 2023, I think in September is when the state said, no, you can't have a, you can't enforce a curfew any longer. You don't have to do it any longer.
Sure.
You know, the complaint, I mean, you're supposed to just review it every five years. But there's not, in that right there, I think there's two years' worth of what we've done so far as a backup. And it's just general ordinance, I say general, there's no timeline on them, per se. It's just ordinances we have passed.
Right, and I, and I understand that.
Now, the stop sign...
I'm just using it as a...
Well, no, but you're right. It has to go by ordinance, and the ones we have changed or removed, they have been done by ordinance.
Okay.
So, but we've got some that's this long and from 1960, when they offered them here.
I guess the other part of this is where I'm coming from is, is every two years, after the legislature meets, they produce a new local government code. Okay? We're a type of a general law city, okay? Our ordinances have to be supported by state laws. As those state laws change, and there are things changing every time, every session, we need to update our ordinances to match what the laws have changed. And I, for whatever reason, and I'm not here to criticize, I'm just saying it's something I think we need to work on to update our ordinances. That's just, that's my opinion. So I'm asking for a city count. David, you got a comment on this?
I do.
Sorry. Yes, sir.
Okay. I think that staff reviewing our ordinances and forwarding anything relevant to council is appropriate. And I'd also just like to note that they do this, often with help from TML, when the legislature is updating stuff. However, like, going line by line through all of our ordinances and trying to, like, resource it back to the Texas local government code, ostensibly great. That's going to take a whole lot of either staff or attorney time, and that's not gonna be cheap. And I also think that there are a few, more than a few things on council's plate right now. Off the top of my head, the question of airport zoning, the question of HLC authority, the question of the numerous things crashing in around the city from every side. I think a lot of those are more pressing than trying to resource line by line old ordinances for required administrative fixes. And so, I think this is great if we have a light agenda coming up sometime in the next few months, but I don't think this is, like, the end-all, be-all of what we need to do this year.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Good. Go.
Yeah, I, I'd be interested in agreeing with David a lot, we, we do get informed of changes from the legislature through our attorneys, through TML, and Scott and his staff are pretty good about informing us when we have to change things because being on council, I, every, you know, says, no, you can't do that anymore, we gotta change this. So they're pretty good about keeping up on that, on us. Um, same thing with, uh, the chief and, and, I mean, like, right now, we're looking at this whole thing related to, you know, off-road vehicles, whatever they're called about, and that's all trying to, you know, follow state law on that and working your way through that, so I'm not, I, I don't think we have a lot of problems, but I do think we need to remind ourselves annually, like our ordinance says, what, what these procedures are.
Good, thank you. Houston? Shaden?
I agree with what everybody says, I mean, yes, we have to review them. However, we do have a lot more pressing issues, like, one of them we're gonna discuss is the UDO stuff. And so I, yes, I understand that, and it is important to review them. And I, I like the idea of hiring a temporary person to work and organize it to help Debra, because I know we inundate Debra with a lot, um, but, yeah, so, I agree with everybody else.
Okay. I, I guess we can just move on, and you guys just follow on and give us a, sir?
Can I make one more comment on this? It's got to do with turning things in to be on the agenda that we, that need to be reviewed. And of course, this is really in, in your ballpark, but there was a time, if you did not have the material for the next meeting, and by Wednesday, it did not go on the agenda, period. Because I get my copy, which like you do, uh, from Ms. Howe, very, very late Friday night, because she's trying to get it all together, and if we, if she would appreciate some consideration to have everything that's going to be on the agenda, unless it's an emergency submitted to her by Wednesday, and she won't be here so late on Friday night, and the packages can get out a little early, and we'll have a little bit more time maybe to look at them.
Help me correct, if I'm wrong, Scott or, or Debra, please, but I believe the current process is, I, I don't want to get off on a tangent, but we'll talk about the ordinance real quick. I think it says, uh, in there that items have to be four days prior at 5:00 p.m., which would be Wednesday at 5:00 p.m. That's, and, and of course, anything that's placed on the agenda like, after that, would be considered something of such urgency that needs to be gone, so the cutoff time, that's by our rules. Now, I don't know what cutoff time you put on your staff, and I'm not gonna go into there, but, but, uh, if that needs to be addressed to back it up to noon or whatever, to give you more time, then I think that's something we need to work through and agree to.
They're, they're really the only, so, we are, we are kind of adhering to that, Bob, that, that, we did have a new mayor, and we're, we're passing the gavel, as we saw tonight. So I think that, that really the outstanding action item is for Bruce and myself and, uh, Debra to coordinate on your approval, and when you're gonna look at the, basically give your rubber stamp of approval on the agenda, because at the end of the day, the mayor approves the agenda, um, and it goes to our attorney as well for, for legal review, but, um, so we just need to coordinate on that aspect of it, but as far as getting the things in, I think we've done a, we've gotten a whole lot better from a staff standpoint. Now, as you saw tonight, the backup, and how we get the backup to you, et cetera, you know, we, we need to, we, there's area, obviously, there's areas for improvement, so we'll work on that.
The ordinance also says, we will ask our questions of him, of the upcoming agenda for business days before the meeting, because at the same time, the stuff to do to him.
Right, yeah.
We, generally, we've been, so we may need to update that, that portion, generally, we've been trying to, to get those questions. What I think I've requested of council in the past is, if you can get into, get them to me by five o'clock on Monday, then I will get you an answer by three o'clock on Tuesday, prior to the council meeting starting, that, that's what we're trying to do.
All right, we can, we can work on that and bring something back, uh, in, uh, on how to proceed, because the ordinance already tells you how to proceed, you just give us a report, and we can go from there. Any further discussion on that? No? Okay. Let's go to the, the next item I have is item G, which is, what is that?
That's boards and commissions.
Okay, discussion take, uh, wait a minute, applicants for open positions on the city's boards and commissions. Deborah?
Oh, what?
But, but, on, on this particular item, I just want to let y'all know that, uh, again, according to the ordinance, when there's a vacancy on a board, and there is a vacancy on planning and zoning because I had to vacate planning and zoning to be able to be here, when there's a vacancy on a board, then the city council or, keyword, or the mayor can appoint an alternate to fill the unexpired term. So based on the ordinance, I'm gonna appoint Ed Escavell to finish the unexpired term that I vacated off the planning and zoning. Done. Second thing is-
Did he approve, did he agree? I know you were asking, I was just-
The, uh, the, uh, zoning board of adjustments, we have two applicants for the zoning board of adjustments. There's two people currently on that board, it needs to be five, it has to have at least four to have a quorum. Well, there's two people that have signed up for that, and, Debra, you wanna take it from there?
Sure, um, we have two applicants for the zoning board of adjustment. Uh, one is Wayne, I think it's, he goes by Doug, uh, Whitaker. And also, I, I believe, uh, Councilman Lee spoke with him on, on possibly wanting to join this board. And then also Joe Holzhaus, which is a former council member that, uh, happens to be a good soul that wants to, uh, participate. We do have the two remaining, I think in this, uh, the backup, I do have the, uh, dates, uh, of the folks that's gonna be coming up. And of course, in the next probably two, probably two meetings from now, you'll get, be starting to get some more applicants because the boards do end their, uh, terms as of the thirtieth. And so some may want to be reappointed, but these two, uh, gentlemen would be appointed to, um, the terms would be ending in twenty twenty-six right now, uh, if you wish to put them on the two full board positions. That still leaves one full board position open, plus the alternate positions. So, we still have work to do, but that would at least give us four members, uh, and then we need preferably a fifth, so if someone did come for a variance, uh, they would have a, a full board.
Okay, I, I get, you didn't get my email?
No.
Did he not apply?
I'm sorry.
Did he not apply?
Yeah.
Did he not apply?
He was supposed to, but I was trying to, I couldn't find this motion.
It's okay.
But, I got, I got you a guy.
Okay, yeah, he just needs to, uh, fill out his applicant, or application, and they meet the criteria, great. But, uh, I'm sorry, back to this, uh, if you wish to appoint them, uh, you can do it individually, uh, it would be for the terms of- Both terms would be ending in twenty-six.
Both of them ended twenty-six. For, uh, Mr. Whitaker and Mr.-
Joe Holzhaus, yes.
Sheena, we'll start down here.
Start down here?
We have to have four members on the ZBA to be able to meet, we only have two. So if there was a request for a variance-
Yeah.
Or, or, or anything, they can't meet.
Correct.
We don't have a, we don't have a quorum, so, uh, and that's a, that, just so we know, the zoning board of adjustments is a, uh, oh-
It's a quasi-board.
They're quasi-board, uh, the, once, once they, once they make a decision or an action, it's, it has to, you have to appeal it to a court of record.
Correct.
So they're, they're a binding decision-
Correct.
Authority.
Now, are we still following the rules we set up that, was this presented at the last meeting?
No, that would be up to y'all if y'all want to do that or just fill this rolls, because you only have two applicants and, and the, and the, I'm just making a comment, that's, that's y'all's decision, but, uh, you're gonna see the same two names in the next meeting, so it's how you want to proceed.
Um, no, they haven't been, uh, I'm not sure, I know, uh, Mr. Holzhaus here, is here, I don't know that I seen Mr. Whitaker. Uh, so he has not attended, but you, he's been to council, council meetings before.
Okay.
And so it's up to you if you want to go ahead and appoint him tonight, or if you'd prefer to have him come back, or, Mr. Holzhaus can step up and introduce himself, it's up to you, that, that-
You don't mean.
Well, the previous, I will say, uh, a few years ago, the previous council, uh, y'all did not have a two-step process. Now, if it's someone you don't know, I understand, that'd be very helpful for you to put a name and a face together. Uh, but it, it's your option on whether or not you wish to continue that, or just to, uh, depending on the situation, uh, whether or not you want to go ahead and appoint him the same night that you see the applicants.
Okay, well, if my fellow council people-
Good, let's go down a moment.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So if we don't follow what we've been doing, where we just look at it this time and make the decision, I'm all for plugging these two people in, we need them. Growth's coming, we're gonna need this, this board ready in the event of disputes or anything like that, that they handle, so.
Thank, thank you, ma'am.
So for clarity, the board has five?
Yes.
There's a five full board members, and then there's two alternates.
There's two alternates, but they have a quorum, we need-
Four.
You need four, right. What happens is, on that board, uh, if you have five members, say you had one board, per, one person wished to vote against the variance, uh, the other four could pass it, if you have four members, you have to have, of course, all four to vote unanimously.
It takes four for a quorum, four for an action.
Yes. I'm, I'm fine.
No comments?
David?
So, I, I'd like to hear from Joe, and I don't see Mr. Whitaker, so I can't hear from him, I actually don't know him, and so I'm not comfortable voting for him before I've had a chance to meet him in the council meeting, but I'd love to hear from Joe if he likes to.
I'm gonna smirk on Joe Holzhaus if you don't know him.
Former council member.
Yes, I heard Debra saying a few meetings ago that this, uh, board did not have enough members, and it was, uh, pretty much it was not functioning. So I'm interested in, uh, getting on the board and seeing what it's about. I'm familiar with the ordinances and stuff, you know, I know how to research and stuff because I was former city council member, and, um, instead of sitting out here, I'd like to, uh, get in the game.
All right.
So, yeah.
And I'd just like to say that I, I'd like to stick with our rules, we don't have a bunch of variance applications banging down our door. We have time, it's better to stick with the rules you usually use, um, than to make it look like we're trying to rush people through for one reason or another.
Mr. Lee? I, uh, I know that everybody here was tasked the last meeting to get people to sign up for these boards. Looks like only two of us have done that, the rest of you are, are out of step. But, uh, I, I have no issue with having someone have an application and be here in the audience and speak to the issue, and us put them on that night instead of having them come back for two meetings. I have, and that was the procedure until it was changed previously by council, and so, uh, either way there. Uh, I, I am curious about something you said about the mayor appointing. If we have an alternate that we have right now that has been an alternate for a while-
Right.
And we have a vacancy, having the mayor appoint someone to fill from an alternate position up, I probably don't have an issue with that, but if it's a brand-new applicant, it's first time coming to, to-
Sure.
Work with the city, I think they need to go through city council and not be appointed by the mayor.
I, I understand, I understand that, and I, and I can, I can respect that. So basically following that same problem, premise right now, the longer term.
Okay, uh, as far as, uh, my neighbors, I have encouraged them all for years and years and years to sign up to serve in some way as a city, as I have with my neighbor. There's a lot of very, and people in Castro have very unusual personalities and characteristics, just look up here, and, and so, I, I don't have any problem with, uh, with, uh, either Mr. Holzhaus or Mr. Whitaker serving on the zoning board, because they're gonna need spin-up time anyway. It's a one-year term essentially.
Correct.
At this point.
Okay. Uh, okay, uh, we've gone through the, did you want to make any other comment? Okay, then we'll look for a motion on how y'all would like to proceed.
I would like to make the motion that we appoint Joe Holzhaus to position one, and Mr. Whitaker to position two on the zoning board of adjustments.
I see.
Those were the terms that ended June of twenty-six?
Yes.
Okay, motion made, accepted, no further discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. Yes, yes, okay, uh, let's move on to the item I, which is, here we go. Okay, well, been asked, so let's just take about a five-minute break if we can, please. Let's recess at eight forty-five, or seven forty-five, excuse me, seven forty- Okay, well-
Your two-hour meeting is, is, is already in progress.
Well, we're gonna be out of here by nine o'clock.
Okay, now, I believe in decorum, I'm not wearing it, so now-
Okay, well, okay.
Well, there's a special meeting.
Bruce?
Sir?
If, if we, if you don't-
Let's do that, let's do that next.
I was about to say that, because police chief has to drive all the way to work.
I didn't know if the chief's staying home.
No, no, the other police officer.
Just, just do that.
Yeah.
I didn't realize that, I was looking at it and thinking, I don't know.
Hopefully that would be a lot of discussion.
No, it shouldn't.
Why should I mention Sheena?
Uh, I don't know, please.
Ms. Howe? Do you think there's a difference between, uh, you two?
No, but, you two, like I said, originally Mr. Horsett, we screened it properly.
So this is good. If you flip, switch it, and you started the, uh, house split. So the video scene, you never, never-
Yeah, that one guy, and this is, you're welcome. That was the only guy, and somebody broke it, and I think we were talking, God is saying that means, or we've gotten to where it's almost too slow. It didn't take that long.
So, some of the people in the audience don't understand that.
Last time, I never pulled it. No, it's, it's, all that's-
Okay.
My one that I think of, just my, this is important.
So, I'm just looking at some of yours, like, oh, I've seen my name. I wanted to, uh, I wanted to, I wanted to-
So whatever this was, I was, I was, I was Facebook, and then I had to put a public, and then I had to be silent.
Everything in you is touched by this web roster. Yep. And I think that every. Is functioning. It's the interaction with them that's creating.
We'll see how it does with this work. It's weird. It's almost, and I know it's just medical. And I never touched it. I said, my audio, I can't stand it then. They say they can't hear us. And I'll see this walk off and they say, well, all of a sudden the audio.
So you remember where we went through those things, what sort of, just when you brought them back?
Which back?
Back, uh, driving them off.
Just go down there again if it happens.
And put it back.
Yeah, I get off at two.
Use that as. Then we'll use that as input.
That's like, I'm out there tomorrow. I'll avoid it.
I hope it's good.
Yes.
Uh, probably so. I can get to it.
So. Let's go. We gotta put this down. The last thing I made that week, he shot me a text asking me if what day during the week of the nineteenth of May would be good for the workshop and everything. I'm like, well, when he sent it, it was two o'clock in the morning. So my phone makes noise here after you got it. So he tells them, what's going on? I look at. I don't know. I will have to let you know when I get back.
You know what you do. At five, you're five, and then you schedule this for two AM. Actually.
So we're listening to them later on, like in the morning. Does your phone signal this morning? Was it dead or was it? It's like, you're, you're attacking the meeting and you're just going to get up. I'm like, oh, let me bring it up. Well, we had no sound, so it's like, we share ours.
Nope, he didn't have them. He didn't have them. Have them, because I'm being so busy. I have time because I have some trouble with these.
Four hours later, this is what.
Yeah.
I sure wish I could have gotten off and walked away for four hours.
Oh, no.
It was, it was weird. Because it was nine hundred. You guys, I'm trying to name for me. We had already gone all over the place.
Because last, last meeting was the twelve-thirteen AM.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, and that's not when it's, when it's turned, it was fifteen, the experience. Sorry, sir.
Yeah, very good way to get them. They're all great. I've been trying to help. You know, we eat at thirty.
Well, not for all of us. Some do some, uh, some just.
This is a driving science. God, I'm gonna have to listen to my audience. She thinks this thing is going on so many times. I don't know that y'all are talking away and I'm trying to write them and I'm like, I don't know where we're at. So unfortunately, good luck with the minutes.
I have, uh, I've been taking notes of. Nobody reads this, I feel like. I can, I can forward you my notes. I've been taking notes of when I'm jumping out.
Yeah.
You should beat the check. Take a great picture.
Thank you.
Take notes. I mean, minutes. Anyway. I thought we were in the majority or vote issue. Then it's a story. Desert.
Yeah.
I thought we were. Uh, I, it doesn't say that in the minutes. It doesn't say that. I thought we did. I thought we did too.
Phil?
Our back. I mean, I don't know.
It says, it's something I heard, heard kind of resulted in this. It's already a good deal. In the minutes from the UDO discussion last time, my understanding was we left that issue. We could move into. Somebody could not be forced to be designated as this work progress.
I'm past my five.
Voluntarily, it was not, we moved the forceful inclusion strictly.
Yeah. Good. Everybody wears a coat and tie. Let's, uh, let's bring the meeting back.
I'm sorry. Let me, I'm starting the audio. Okay, now if you don't mind recess. Reconvene.
Let's reconvene. Let's call it that. We're gonna go ahead and move H, the police department generator grant. We're gonna move that up. So, uh, chief, I just want to give you a couple of comments beforehand.
Yes, sir.
I fully support a grant. Anytime we can get a grant.
Yes.
A grant for a generator. I've been chasing a generator grant for four years or five, whatever, since, since winter stern year. And I've even been in DC talking to USDA to get a grant and they won't give me one. So I commend you on that.
Thank you.
Okay? But I do have a couple of questions for you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Um. Who spec your generator? And the reason I ask this is the city owns a natural gas system.
Correct.
Okay? Versus a diesel tank that has issues with aging fuel.
Mayor.
Fuel qualities.
I'm sorry. Uh, did you read the item? I don't think he read the item. If you'll read the item, please.
I'm sorry. Which one is it?
It's H.
H.
You mentioned the letter, but you didn't actually read the item.
Thank you very much for telling me that. I had a fine. Okay. I'm sorry. Discussion, I, I haven't been different orders. Discussion and take appropriate action, you know, on acceptance of Texas Department of the Sixty KW Diesel Generator at the Castro Police Department and authorizing the expenditure of a twenty percent match of fifteen thousand fifty-one dollars, twenty-one cents from the city's general fund. Now, let me go back to what I said.
Yes, sir.
Chief, I, I, I fully support it.
Yes, sir.
But I have a couple of questions as far as the use of diesel versus versus nat- natural gas. It's been, uh, public works and the fuel. We didn't have to deal with, he has a propane tank, and the reason is because now they have to use white diesel.
That would be, uh, me.
Of course. I, as you said, I brought this up last time about the fuel. And the gentleman that, uh, still, is still in the reserve that came out to work on the generator.
Yes, sir, yes.
He was experienced with this specific generator over in Iraq and other places. And my concern was if you don't take care of the diesel fuel, make sure it doesn't go bad. But with diesel, not the case. It, it's all under our roof. And, uh, anyway, as the gentleman was working on the generator that's currently there, which is a, really a good generator, they have a, you know, fuel-water separator. It's part of this whole system and basically said that generally takes care of, of most of the issues for any water that might get in there. But, uh, a regular scheduled maintenance plan, service plan is, is imperative for all the generators we have. So I'm, I'm in support of, uh, of us doing this not to exceed, and if you can get the rest of the twenty-five percent knocked off, then.
Chief, I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
How many diesel tanks do you have there or will you need?
I think, I don't have the specs in front of me. I think it was like a hundred gallon. I think, I think it was a hundred gallons, I think. I'd have to double check.
Generator run capacity on that is what? Eight hours?
I don't have those specs in front of me. I know that, that, um, Councilman King actually did the, uh, numbers on it as far as to see if the slab would support that, and it did.
I just wanted to make sure you had enough bigger diesel tank to, to satisfy maybe an eight-hour window or.
Yes, sir.
Whatever.
If, well, as, as Chief said, I looked at those specs.
Yes, sir.
It's the fuel tank is self-contained in the unit.
Okay, it's a belt, like a belly tank.
Yes, sir.
It was, it was almost twenty hours or something.
Right.
So.
Thank you. That's, that's.
Sir. I, aren't all the rest of our backup generators at the list station, the sewer plant, aren't they all diesel?
They're, they're belly tanks.
I, I believe so. I.
So I would assume we have some reserve of diesel fuel somewhere. Well, look, look into it. Let us know. In a pinch, and I mean really in a pinch, you can use jet fuel, but you gotta put some oil in there with it. And then when you're finished using it, you gotta completely clean the system out. But, uh, we generally have several eight thousand gallons of jet fuel, but that's the last.
When David, when David, uh, Kirkpatrick was here, that was the, the pinch resolution we had.
Yeah.
I don't, we don't have a fuel truck, right?
Right.
Um, and I'd have to, I need, I just need to ask department heads if there's any fuel reserves. Of course, we do have diesel, uh, operated machinery, so there is diesel that you, you prioritize depending on the, on the use of that machinery during whatever that.
You have fuel cell in a truck that you haul fuel to your equipment?
Yeah, so there probably is some tanks and I just don't know, I don't know how many of those are and what the field.
Yeah, just, just an FYI, we have multiple larger generators and they all have three hundred gallon belly tanks to run. And every time there's a emergency or a forecasted emergency, first thing we do is fill those tanks.
And that's. Well, we actually reach out to, for my former agents, who would reach out to a, a, uh, station. And say, hey, lock down, you know, X amount of gallons of fuel for us.
Yes, sir. And I think it's very, and I'm glad to hear that you put it through an exercise program, so.
Back home.
Uh, that helps rotate your fuel too.
Yes, sir. You are correct.
Uh, I'm looking for a motion. Right.
Yeah, I make a motion. We accept the, uh, the grant proposal for a generator for city police department.
I'll second.
Motion made second to move forward with the grant.
Thank you for your support.
Okay, any, any further discussion?
I got a vote.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition, no, motion carried. There you go, chief.
Thank you.
Make it happen.
Thank you.
All right. We got that. Now let's move on to, back to item I. And I'm gonna read it this time so I can get this straight. Discussion and possible action regarding the contract for planning services with Simple City Design. I'm just gonna set a table really quick for this and, and it's a, the city council, it's your call, but based on uh, my understanding of previous city council discussions that, uh, my recommendation is to terminate the service contract and everything associated with it effective immediately. Uh, I'll open this up for conversation. Uh, Phil, go ahead. Who? You.
Me.
Yes, sir.
Uh. Terminating the contract doesn't stop the process.
No, I didn't say that.
The UDO. So I do think we need to continue on the UDO process. Do we need Simple City there or not? I think that's really for staff to ask them to advise us. If we canceled them and had to bring someone in to finish up the work, if that's what we want to do, then, uh, is, is that going to be cost efficient or not? So I would recommend we get some feedback on that. If the decision of council is to quit the UDO process, I don't think we should do that until we have a plan. I do think we have problems with our CZO. We, we know there's conflicts. We know they caused a bunch of problems. Going through this process, we've learned even more about these conflicts and these concerns. Uh, you know, a house burns down, you can't rebuild the house. So these issues are all there still. But I think before we actually were to terminate the whole UDO process, I think we have to have a plan forward. Uh, but as far as canceling the contract, I think the contract is basically over. It monetarily, there's, uh, based on the, the packet that went out, there's some additional money that, that we probably owed them from a contractual standpoint. But as far as do we think we need to hire them moving into the future to clean this up, I think it would be prudent to ask the question if we, if we say, okay, we're not gonna hire you anymore, is that gonna cost us even more money? So, so that's, that's, it's, that's specific to the question you're asking and that's specific to my question, my answer to that particular question.
Okay, but I just want to make one thing clear. This is not about the UDO. This is not about the CZO. This is a services agreement with Simple City that, uh, is up before the city council to either continue with their services or to terminate their services. It has nothing to do with terminating, ending, or moving forward the UDO. It's just who's providing the services associated with that. So I just want to make that clear. This action here does not terminate that process, in my opinion. Houston?
Um, I'm fine with terminating.
Okay. Sheena?
Okay. So in April, we were briefed that the contract had expired. So in April, we were briefed that the contract had expired and that we paid them over $25,000 to cover January, March timeframe for services rendered. Now we're being told that we owe an additional $30,000. Where, for what? What, in addition to the $25,000 that we, that we agreed, said, oh yeah, we got to pay? What is this, where did this $30,000 come from?
Scott?
Could I go and answer that? So that is in the backup, but essentially in April, when you were briefed, we had already, and I was not aware of this, but April 2nd, I believe, we met on April 8th, I believe it was April 2nd. There had been an invoice submitted. At that meeting, you all, the council directed me to stop payment or stop any work that was being done by Simple City, which we did.
Yeah.
They did not bill us for any additional work. We've told them, don't do anything else, and they haven't done anything else. There is more work to be done. But we can debate or talk about how to get that work done. So that's what that's from, that 30, this, this bill is the same bill that had already been submitted as of April. There, there's a date, April 2nd of 2025. And it is, they laid out where that work came from. I mean, without going line by line and reading it to, it's, it's in there. But basically, it's just a bunch of changes, a bunch of stuff that they've been working on since.
So it's the amount, it's the amount that was listed on the 8th plus the late fee penalty that they're charging.
Yeah, there is a late fee and I'm sure we can negotiate that away. I'm very confident in that.
Okay. So as of right now, Sheena, if I may, as of, as of right now, that's, it's not cumulative to what was on the 8th. It's the total, total.
The $30,000 according to this is in addition to the $20,000 that we spent.
That's correct. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you, we paid an invoice. He, I think the, on the 8th, the request for the information was what do we pay them today, which is what was provided. And we had paid at that point 520,000. I don't think it was 25,000, it was 520.
Yeah, but still.
But yeah.
Because I.
It's a big number.
Why, why was it, why wasn't council giving a heads up? Because, and I was told.
And this, yeah.
Because it was under $25,000 and I'm like, ah, we still need to know what's going on.
Agreed.
But now we got an additional $30,000 and it's like, hey.
Yeah, and that's where it came from. They'd already, again, they'd already submitted that invoice when we told them to stop. As if I approved a certain amount, I didn't know how much they were going to be billing us and how much work they had yet to do. So.
So, so if I may, ma'am, this, and this is where, and I'm just going to say it. I disagree with the approval of the minutes of last meeting because it doesn't specify what was brought out that the original agreement was a not to exceed amount. That's not in the minutes. It just says he has $25,000. And also in the agreement with Simple City, they actually listed a 10% contingency, but that, that evidently didn't go to city council when city council approved a not to exceed. So Simple City is hanging on. They have made an agreement with a 10% contingency, but city council direction was a not to exceed. So it didn't include a contingency. So basically their total amount now, if you add those together, is the 10% contingency. So it's just, it's just, in my opinion, it, it needs the end. David?
Oh, okay. Loop around. I believe Mr. King's references to the UDO process were in response to your remark to terminate the contract and everything associated with it.
Okay.
I think that's why he brought that up.
Okay, then I may have misspoke on that.
Yeah. As for terminating the contract, the contract is already over. This is just the final bill. And these charges are due to the substantial rework caused by shifts in the planning and zoning committee and the city council late in the process. We are way over the 10 month schedule because of our actions. It's not Simple City that overran. It was us. We were still requesting changes in March largely at the insistence of people who are on this dais today. Considering how far over schedule we are, I'm very impressed with how little extra we're being billed for. And I think we should pay them for the work they've done.
I wonder who he's referring to.
Mr. Lee?
Yes. I thought the gentleman was going to be here tonight. The fellow from Simple City, I thought he was going to be here.
Did I tell you who's going to be here or? I say, I've.
I, I absolutely disagree that the blame should be placed on planning and zoning for the citizens because from the get-go, we asked for comparisons between documents. Those didn't come along till the 11th and a half hour. Okay, and so for us to be able to digest what was and what's proposed, even this council and staff told us, well, we really can't do that. We just, there's no way for us to compare. Yet you produced a comparison, a pretty good one, which we did in-house, thank goodness. And so to say that we are at fault because we're trying to get a document that we can live with, I don't buy that. And, and so I, question that I had for them is how many cities of our size with the kind of things we were asking them to do have they done before? When I looked online, there are very, very few cities that they have done this kind of thing. They did little pieces and parts of other stuff, but as far as as comprehensive as ours, I didn't see one. I think maybe Tyler, I know they did Bandera. I don't see that that's a direct comparison, but, which made me think, did they have enough experience with doing what we were asking to do to make an accurate projection of how much time is required? And when you've got people in the picture, things are flexible. So we had to live by a timeline that didn't reflect the interest or the needs of the citizens of the city in order to get the information that they want. And so I, I can't fault the city for wanting to have more information in order to understand what they were stepping into, which seems to be what is being placed on the city and I vehemently disagree with that. But then I wanted to know how much experience did they have in order to make the, the cost estimates for what work they provided to us? And it appears to me that we have been doing the vast majority of the work in the last number of months. Thanks to Ms. Soto and the mayor, former mayor, who did quite a bit of work on comparisons and so forth. So I think we ought to pay our contractual obligations to them, proceed on our own. If for some reason we need additional services, then we can look at it at that time. But I would end, I would basically pay the bill and, and obligate more money to them at this point.
Okay, sir.
Can I ask you something else?
Sure.
So the additional money is from the equal length meeting, I believe, Scott. We're going to go back and renegotiate with him because from, to Mr. Lee's point, we don't have complete documents. They're saying it's our fault. I, I agree with Mr. Lee.
It wasn't to renegotiate the 20,000 that we'd already spent. That was, it was to negotiate the final payment, which I've done.
Right.
So they're, they're not billing us for their full time.
I understand, but we still don't have complete documents. And my point on the 30 grand is that I think they owe us.
Yeah, we don't have the.
Respectfully.
Sure.
Because we suffered through that. And Mr. Lee's right, it's not the citizens of Castorville. It's, it's Simple City. That's how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to add to that, I, this is the first time I've got to see the, the contract. And I may miss something there because I'm, I'm not really up to the way you guys are writing things. But almost reads like they own everything. The, the finished product and all, and if we want access to it, we got to pay them more for it. So, and I don't, and I may be wrong, but that's the way it read to me. So I, I, let me back up. I'll entertain a motion to how you want to handle this.
Well, Chief, I can say one thing more.
Sure.
In, in support, first off, city council approved the contract that was signed.
Yes.
So we approved it with the contingency. So city council backed down for whatever, and I was on city council then. Whatever reason, we, yes, we said they have this 500,000, but at the same time, we said this is the contract and by contract, it's in there. So I support with, with what Mr. Lee said is that we should give them what contractually they're obligated to. Based on what Scott said, they did discount the last invoice to us. And I don't think David was saying it's our fault, but it's because of the effort that the P&amp;Z was going through and the citizens and all these meetings at city council and P&amp;Z and everybody, and they were here listening to it. And so it's not that everybody's at fault, it's just that you're trying to guess at something that's half a million dollars in cost. And, and we did go through a very expensive effort here. But at the end of the day, I'll make a motion that we pay Simple City their invoiced amounts and that we, if we need them in the future, we'll just hire them on a per hour cost. And that, that didn't need to go into the motion, but I guess my understanding.
Motion is basically in, in this, in this particular agreement this time. And if there's anything in the future, then we can negotiate.
Separately, yeah. We'll, we'll pay them what they're contractually obligated and which is the invoices they have submitted. And we won't renew this particular contract.
Okay. Motion made, I'm looking for a second. Second by Bob Lee. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? No, motion carries. Okay, thank you all. Let's move on to, to be item K, which is discussion and appropriate action to award a contract for service for design, instruction in the city hall remodel and potential future library expansion. I'll start this real quick since I'd like to give my comments first and then y'all can go from there. I had a discussion briefly with Scott and Deborah about this. And that was before they opened the RFQs last week. And of course, this is an RF, this is a, an agreement for professional services. And I'm sure your attorney, certainly the city attorney is going to correct me wrong. But on the Professional Procurement Act Services, basically you choose who's the most qualified candidate and then you negotiate a price. And then if you're unsuccessful in negotiating a price, you go to the next qualified candidate. Am I correct? Okay. Having said that, okay, my recommendation right now, while I'm not, I'm not going to sit here and say no because I know we've been talking about remodeling city hall for more than 20 years. But my recommendation tonight is to table this item until staff brings us a proposed funding solution that does not include any new debt requirements for this project. If you can bring that to me to show how it's paid for other than issuing debt on behalf of the city, which I believe is already higher than it should be, then I support it. But otherwise I won't. And that's my, my position. Mr. Lee?
Well, I wasn't involved in the initial process that the city went through to discuss all this. And so I'm allowed to be alarmed by what I read. And what we're counting on is for us to get grants to pay for a lot of this, it appears.
No.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm reading that it's part of their, their thing is to be to try to go out and get us some grants.
That's true.
Correct me in a minute. What alarmed me was the price could be anywhere between 1.5 and $3 million. Okay, that's a pretty big spread. And the payments were going to be funded by interest on the general fund in excess of 200,000. That is in no way, shape or form guaranteed for the future, it just isn't. And so I'm going, well, we're tying up a whole lot of money based upon what we hope will be 200,000 dollar worth of interest on the general fund stuff. And I don't know, is that part of the contingency money in the general fund or is that, I'm reading here, physical impact TBD. The city has earmarked the general fund interest, which is in excess of 200,000 a day for this project. Does that mean? Is that how you intend to pay for it? Is that how you intend to pay?
No, that's just how you, that's what you, those are the only funds that this council has identified to pay for this project. There have been no other funds allocated as of today. The reason you see such a big swing in the, the estimate is, I mean, it's kind of, I mean, it's kind of ironic because we just talked about a $500,000 estimate for a project that was two years ago. And, you know, you're asking me to estimate the cost of a building that we haven't even started, that I haven't scoped, that I don't have an engineer for, that I haven't got any real direction for council on other than some approved floor plans. So I'm giving you a really big swag on, on that, but I don't know what it is. And we did look at some, some grants and that's, we were looking for a partner that can help us look for grants. But I also want to be very realistic with council. I don't want to appear like I'm trying to sell something that, you know, anyway. So, so far, we've not been successful in identifying a grant, a realistic grant to try and get this project funded. And I just want to be very open and transparent about that. And, and clear, you know, to be very clear that I do believe that you're going to have to issue some kind of debt or a borrowing. So debt, you know, whether it's issued through a certificate of obligation or you could go through a USDA, a low interest loan of some kind, but it's still a borrowing. That ultimately, if you really want to get this project done, you're going to have to spend, you're going to have to go borrow money. I don't think you're going to, it's realistic to expect that there will be a grant of some kind that's going to pay for it. At one point, I thought we could go through a PACE program, which is still a borrowing. That's not grant. There are some forgivable aspects to those types of programs, but all of those are based on energy efficiency. And our preliminary analysis of the energy efficiency of the building, while it can be reduced for the main envelope that we're in right now, when we add the annex, this is part of the report that we heard from Gabriella, the lady from Fiero, I think, from McKinstry was that their preliminary analysis, again, it's preliminary, is that by adding that additional space, you negate the, the savings to the extent that you can't, you're no longer, you can still have some savings, but it's not enough to qualify for one of those programs. That was their initial response. Well, that really took the wind out of our sails because that was going to be how we were going to fund it. But again, I want to be realistic, like, I think at this point, based on that feedback and what I've heard so far, unless some miracle happens and there's some other new grant that comes out that we're not aware of today, I think you're going to be, at best, you could cobble together different portions of different grants for different things. So whether it's solo, solar or some type of energy grant or something else, or maybe there is a emergency shelter, there's some of those. We, we, if we had, that's why, again, part of the reason to get a partner that understands this and the top three kind of point by points had the most experience in those areas. It's one of the reasons they were recommended. I don't know if that answers all your questions, Bob.
So what is the, there's no money in here about what this contract would take with McKinney.
That's, that's correct. So, so these are not, you're not going to know what the price is until you sit down and try to negotiate something. Our, our new mayor, Alexander correctly identified what that process looks like, which is why I tried to give you an estimate. Generally, it's between 10 and 20% of the total project cost is what you would expect to spend in this type of contract. And these days, it seems to trend a lot higher. Again, I think you've got a council person, Phil King, he's more experienced in that area and looking at these types of contracts. So I tried, I would, if you're thinking about a number, whatever number's in your head, think higher. And that's just realistic. And ultimately, this is a project I'd love to see get done, but y'all may decide you don't want to, you can't afford it. And I mean, we understand that. But my job is to present, present the information to you as accurately as I can. And unfortunately, right now, it's just a really big guessing game.
Well, I, I appreciate that. And yes, I concur that since the building was 10 years old, probably it's, people have wanted to, to make it all useful to us as a full, full city hall of the offices and, and I want to do that. But it appears we're stepping off into some water we don't know how deep is. And once we've started the process, we're going to pay somebody some money and maybe give us an answer that we don't think we can do right now.
Now, something you could, I'm sorry, there's something you could negotiate with whoever you select. If you want to try to put some milestones, and again, I would probably lean on the expertise of Councilman King to help us identify what the milestones are to try and cap those costs. So in other words, we will pay you to do this amount of research into the project. And then if we get to that point, we'll, that'll be a go-no-go situation where we've agreed to pay you whatever the sum is, $80,000, $100,000. When we get to that point, we want to know, is this a viable project or not? That's one way you could look at, at doing that, but it, you know, it does get hairy, as you've already seen.
I'm sorry, I have a comment on that one really quick and I just want to ask a question. Because I've, I've done it both ways. So with an engineer to say, this is. So with an engineer to say, this is what I want. Do your engineering come up with a cost, they get a percentage of it, we move on. Or, or we've hired professional services that pay them an hourly rate to lay out the plans and specs. And then we decide with a cost estimate, then we decide if we want to proceed farther on. So it's, my concern is locking down a professional services, basically moving forward to agree with a project that we don't have funding for. And that's my concern.
Legitimate concern.
David?
Could you share for some of the, the new people up here, essentially, why we're looking at this? What, what are the restrictions we have in our current city hall, especially as we look towards our population doubling or more in the next five to 10 years?
Honestly, primarily regard, even if there was no growth planned whatsoever, the current state of the city hall, if you just kind of look around, look up, look to your left, look to your right, it needs TLC. We started this process when I first got here and, and I worked with a contractor. And as contractors do sometimes, they go out of business. So we picked a contractor, he did some work for us. The contractor went out of business, it was no longer warranted, and lo and behold, we have leaks in our ceiling again. Some of this stuff just isn't going to get fixed without a major remodel. The lipstick approaches that we've, that we've made have not been enough. So the idea was to, to do, try to fix the envelope of the building and stop the intrusions. We did some of that, we're successful in some areas, but we haven't been successful in all of them. But ultimately, that's the primary reason that, that this, this is being looked at. As we were looking at it, we said, well, what could we do if we tried to just beyond taking care of the building and addressing the needs that it has for maintenance? Because also the electrical is outdated, AC is, like, there's a lot of inefficiencies, the windows and the, you look at the, the actual doors and windows, they're literally falling apart, right? So there's a lot of those aspects that need to be replaced or fixed or what have you. And at this point, most of it's replacement. Beyond that, we then started to look at, okay, what are the uses? If we're going to do that level of effort, what else could we look at? And that's when we started to explore expansion with the, the council, et cetera. But ultimately, the city is growing. I, I think it's important, and we had some discussion about this, you know, where does city hall in the future? Other comprehensive plans looked at moving city hall to what would be the new city center east of town. By city center, I mean like locus of population. And I think I shared with you all, one of my prior mentors that knows a lot about the local economies, et cetera, strongly advised another city I worked for that was equally historic not to move their city hall out of their historic downtown because it is an anchor tenant and it, and it's part of the health and well-being of this downtown area. And if you care at all about it, you know, his, his strong recommendation is leave it there. And so that was my experience from a prior city, I brought that here, that same recommendation and said, look, you know, we really should think about where we're going to put city hall. And my advice to you professionally is to keep it here. So with all that in mind, that's how kind of we ended up with the project. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. And you mentioned the possibility of negotiating in breakpoints. Would it be possible to put sort of a breakpoint of a certain amount of design? And then if we haven't found funding by now, we'll focus on maintenance of our existing building?
I think that's something we can negotiate, we need to discuss that. And I, I also wanted to mention this is, is that I didn't intend this to try and be approved tonight, it could be. Certainly you have a lot of information there, but I fully anticipated, part of the reasons on the agenda is because when we issued the RFQ, we had a, a list of dates and I realized I had put today's date as when we was going to come before council. And if I'd been thinking about the mayoral exchange, et cetera, I never would have picked today. But I was just doing math, when's our council meetings, how many weeks do I give them to respond? So that's the reason it's on the agenda, not necessarily because staff felt like this is ready for us to make a decision. I fully anticipated y'all might want to have some discussion, give me some more direction, and then we can go from there.
Thank you.
Mr. King?
You know, I, a little bit what Scott was saying, since I've been on council, what are we going to do to this building? If we move city hall somewhere else, we still own this building. We still are the caretakers of this building, we still need to maintain this building. So, and then when Scott mentioned that, and, and council, I think everybody supported, this is the building it needs to stay in, we just need to improve it. It's falling down, it's hurting, it needs to be fixed. And the reason Scott has this big swag is because nobody knows what it's going to cost to fix it. So to answer your question, Dave, yes, when we, if we were a higher company, we tell them, listen, you know our financial situation, this is all in the negotiation. First thing, we're going to need some kind of a preliminary assessment. No matter what we do today or 10 years down the road, we're going to need to know a preliminary assessment of what needs to be repaired here. They went into this McKendrick, if that's the company we hired, the county hired them to go into the city hall.
The county, the county. You said city hall, county courthouse.
Excuse me, the courthouse, the historic courthouse. And they did an assessment, they came up with this is what it's going to cost. They then submitted a grant, a request to the Texas Historic Commission. And, and we were here and this is, this is all the other people that were submitting grants and this is how much money the Texas Historic Commission, so they, so the county didn't get it this time. They're hopeful, maybe next time or the time after. But you, you can't just kick it down the road, you need to start somewhere. Now, for instance, as professional services, as Scott said, in the past, the city council had said, okay, you can take the interest off this, $200,000 now. That's where these design fees are going to come out of, because that pays for everything. Not just construction, you also, it's design and construction.
It, it doesn't, what you mean is it can be used for anything related to the project. It doesn't pay for everything because it's not, clearly not $3 million, but I think that's what you meant, right?
What I'm saying is that, yeah, so we have some money we've already saved up that we could go into the design fee. That's kind of what I'm, not the total design fee, not the finished product, but just enough down the road where we now have a better handle of how much money we are going to need. And then also McKendrick, they're out there, they know about all these different grants and they're, they're very honest. They're, they're a little bit pessimistic, they didn't say, no, no, no way, Jose, but they do think that there may be some other possibilities of grants. So I, I think it makes sense, instead of just kicking it down the road, let's at least start the first process. And, and bring somebody on board that can help us, come in here and do an assessment of it. And we tell them, I mean, you know, we're going to negotiate, the city's going to negotiate the contract and it's going to come back to us, city council, to see if we agree with this negotiated contract. And we'll put the stopgaps in there and everything else that makes us all happy and, and satisfied before we even, you know, award this to one of these firms. So I, I think, I think, yes, we don't have the money now, we're going to have the money at some point in time. And let's at least start to thinking about this.
Okay, thank you, Houston?
Yes, so my mother was on the city council in our little town of Meridian, Texas. And they restored our, in Bosque County, you guys can Google this thing, it's pretty cool. But my great, great, I think four greats was a rock mason on that same courthouse when they built that bridge. And so it's kind of cool that 150 years later, she helped restore it, you know, and so did the city and we had grants. So my point to that, I've lived that, and our history and our architecture is obviously important. More so to me than moving it east, you know, I, I agree with you, Scott. And I also agree with Mayor Alexander is that, you know, well, in that, we have to be responsible in the context of our funding. But I'm, I'm aligned with finding out, you know, setting up a priority in a scale of we're in, we're out. But at least understanding what we can do, you know, because getting a building dry and saving it is a lot cheaper. And, you know, if we can't get the grants, but just get it to where we're not having that, right? So that's how I feel.
Sheena?
Oh, you're fine. The building needs work. It's obvious, you see the cracks, you see stuff falling down from the, around us. We know the infrastructure, i.e. electrical, AC units, the roof. Everything needs to be redone. It's, it's a very old building. And part of the very old building is you have to do a midlife overhaul to get rid of the old stuff, bring in the new stuff to keep it working. I have, I understand about, you know, between 20, 225,000, 600,000 for the engineering and all that, that's great. Now, with that being said, are we going to, if, if we approve this, are we going to plug this in as part of our?
CIP?
Well, when, when we do the workshop, remember, we had asked the department heads to tell us about their three top projects. Well, whichever department is following or put that as a. You would have this as one of your top three projects to get done?
I, I think so.
Okay, because I, I want to make sure we're all tracking.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, we're veering off into another topic area, which is our budget. We're going to talk about that at our future meetings, so.
Okay, yeah, we need to get done. Don't, don't we still have that company that looks, right, looks for grants and everything, like up at DC and all that stuff? And we don't have them no more?
The EMC is who you're thinking of? No, we discontinued that contract.
Okay, okay. But maybe for tourism and everything, I don't know if Darren Hamm could possibly help look for grants since this is a historic building, part of our tourism and everything?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
I know I'm going out there, but I'm just.
We get, ACOG does have a grants group and we have reached out to them and this is a project that I'm also talking. So it's not just that we're going to rely exclusively on whoever the partner is that you, you would choose for us to try and work with. We're, we're going to continue to search other means and bring those to, because my idea is like, when we identify something, we then put it in front of McKinstry and say, or whoever you select, they're the, I keep mentioning them because they're the ones that scored the IAS. But whoever you were to select, we would bring those other grants to them for them to make, look into and see how viable they are, right?
Okay.
So we'll continue to, to research that.
Okay, but yeah.
I would love to see this project get done.
Yeah, it needs to get done. I mean, the building's falling around at, at our feet.
Well, the upstairs is crumbled.
Oh, yeah.
The walls have crumbled because of the type of walls. And so when you. The type of walls, because they're.
Well, honestly.
Not plaster, but I mean, I've, I've had TML look at them years back when I first came here. And they don't cover it because of the, you know, the issue with the maintenance and such. And, and they're literally, bless their hearts, it's a strong building, but it is literally crumbling.
Well, the, and I don't know what you guys use upstairs for now. I know the old gym floor, I know way back when this was a school, that was the gym. I know that the city, I can speak for, I can't speak for the last 17 years, but you just, you just confirmed what I'm going to say. The city has neglected any type of maintenance or care for the upside. The building is 18 inch walls, was built in the 1840s. These sites were built for WPA with the exception of those monitors. Mr. Nurse, I was the electric superintendent, we put the lights in here, we built this dais. So I know what this building could do, we ran the electric, we ran this AC stuff.
I thought you were about to hit me with trivia.
Well, we built that bathroom. So we did that, Public Works did these things, okay? For people that may not fully understand is, I guess where your finance folks was, that was city, that was city council chambers. This was the library. When they built the library, this became the council chambers. Did you, I don't know if you knew that. Where Deborah's desk is, was the, was the municipal court. And where that corner where the mayor's office is, was the chief of police. So everything fit. Now, I understand we grow and I got it, but that upstairs has been through neglect. Now, these ends were built in WPA, the flat roofs.
Yes.
They have parapet walls. That's water damage from the parapet walls.
Well, and we have a.
That's from the flashing, the way it is, it's been a nightmare in maintaining.
Well, we also have products up there.
Sure.
That, it's that.
But this is. Right here, there's a decking issue, that's where the.
Okay.
This right here was a fireplace.
But, but, but I, I know from here, there's probably between the ceiling and the actual decking, maybe two and a half, maybe three, or less. There's very little room in here. So I got it, I understand. The, the building is in desperate need of maintenance and repair, there's no question about that. But it's not falling down.
It's because.
The issue is, the issue is the city has continued to grow. And the city has basically outgrown the building, the way it's currently laid out. So you need more room, there's a big room up there to make work. So, but anyhow, I, I agree with it. But my, my opinion is, is if you're going to move forward with these, then my opinion is you do it on a cost per hour basis, not tied to a, a project. And then at the end of that, part of that project, part of that design is a cost estimate. And then you decide if you want to proceed on how you're going to get the funding. But don't line it all up into one thing, in my opinion. Yes, sir?
Yes, this seems like we're stepping off into something else, we really don't know exactly what we're getting into. And we have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on maintenance to this building in the last 15, 18 years. Hundreds of thousands of dollars. We redid the entire roof to this building, that roof's been done, the one over there, they put poly coatings, going to last forever. You know, they sheeted it, they redid drainage and it was fine for a while. We used to have buckets on the floor in here that we caught rainwater in.
We still do now.
And so, and the windows and doors were all replaced at great expense. The city has done absolutely nothing to maintain them. And I have no confidence they're going to do anything to maintain them in the future, before your time, during your time. And they're peeling off, as you saw me come to podium one night with a piece of the window outside, standing up there and said, here's how we take care of our facilities, we don't, we're terrible at it. And so there are three new people up here. I would like to, to see a presentation on what you considered before as far as, I mean, essentially, we build a whole building in the back to get a couple of restrooms and an elevator, which is maybe the right answer.
But then, and the use of the upstairs.
Of course, of course, I, I got that.
That's the whole point, is to get additional office space upstairs. And, and we did have another group come in here and it was going to be 400,000 to a million dollars about 12, 15 years ago to fix the building and, and so forth. And yes, it needs to be done, so it isn't a question of whether we're going to do it, we are going to do it. The question is, is this the right time and how do we pay for it? I would like to see us in the budget process, look at where else is this 200,000 interest could go? We're not doing anything to the streets essentially. But what's the impact on our ability to support the citizenry in the building we in and for how long? So in two years, say, you know, I got to rent space because I run out of space because we have to add more people. I don't know any of that. And I don't know what other options y'all looked at in order to make the upstairs accessible. I would like to understand that and, and how the money could work in case we do not get these additional sources of money we want. Because when we get down to the point of scraping interest on money that we've got set aside to pay for things, that concerns me, that concerns me. And so if we have the 200,000, is that per year?
That's, it's, it's just, no, yeah, it's about, you have a lot of money. Yes, y'all have tens of billions of dollars in the bank that you earn interest on.
Right, you borrowed the money?
No, because we can't, it's arbitrage, you can't keep arbitrage money, so this is separate, this is all cash that you have. Right, so, no, the 200,000 is roughly one, one year's worth. Because we've actually already spent about 80 grand of our interest on getting preliminary assessments done. And I think I addressed some of that in this presentation.
Okay, I, anyway, to finish my point, I would like to have a better understanding of what our options were that you guys have discussed, which shouldn't take very long, and to have a concrete plan as what it's going to cost for us to do this, whether it's all at once or in, in pieces and parts. Because we don't have that now, we're asking to spend money on a contractor to go out and start a process, we don't know if we can even pay.
Well, part of the role, okay, Phil.
So go ahead.
No, Bruce. I was going to ask you a question. Bob, I totally agree with you. We, we need to look at how much what's going to cost, what needs to be repaired, what's going to fall down tomorrow or not fall down. We need those answers. That's why we need to hire a company to do it. And we're not talking about, I mean, my guesstimate is we're probably in this phase one type thing, $30,000 maybe, that high, maybe? Because you already have a lot of preliminary stuff done. And, but we don't know, but let's, but my suggestion is let's go ahead and authorize Scott to negotiate the contract. Not, not for $200,000, it's going to be on an hourly thing with this is what we estimate it's going to cost to do these, these steps by year. And we'll get them to help us, tell us what this final number is, instead of us trying to guess at it. But, so it doesn't cost us anything to negotiate. But, so it doesn't cost us anything to negotiate the contract with them. Let's negotiate the contract, see if we're happy with it, and then we can go forward from there.
Well, let me ask you another question, Scott. And on our professional services agreements we have right now, for example, why can't we task order this through one of our engineers to assess this building?
Well, so a couple of things. We did approve Alamo Restoration to do the initial assessments. We've actually gone down that road a little bit. Alamo Restoration is a, they're a local-based contracting company.
Excuse me, I'm not asking for a restoration. I'm asking for a separate engineering study.
I know, that's, I'm telling you, they've done some engineering studies. That's why I'm letting you know. They looked, they dug, they did little test pits and they looked at the HVAC. So there's a lot of elements that have been done. I've put McKinstry in contact with those folks to make sure we don't repeat some of those same, some of those things may have to be revisited just because of the passage of time. But, um, to reuse as much of that as possible, because we don't want to waste money where we don't have to. But the short of it is, you could do it, you could certainly do that. Where we, how we ended up where we are today is we staffed at a presentation on, do you want to do a design build? Or do you want to do this, uh, what is this bid? What, what do we call this?
Well, there's all sorts of different.
Yeah, but anyway, we looked at four or five different construction methods for City Hall.
Sure.
And ultimately this was the selection that, that council chose. And then we said, okay, now that we've chose that selection, let's look at some, some folks. And so we, I put together an RFP, our RFQ, and then council authorized RFQ, then I issued RFQ. That's how we ended up where we are tonight. You can back up and change your minds and do whatever you want.
Well, then one, one, one last question and I'll let everyone else more. The, the RFQ. Last week, they were sitting in a box on your office. It just came in the mail. Who selected the candidate and what criteria was done? Because I'd like to see the RFQs.
Yeah, so they're, they, and that's one reason why I didn't, we didn't put them as backup in your packet. But it's another, if y'all wanted to look at them, they're available and, and you can put this off till you have a chance to review them or I could make copies or whatever. I have scanned images. Uh, but that's where the backup that's in your packet, there's a rubric. I went through and graded each one of these based on that rubric. That's how you ended up with what you have.
And I appreciate that, but, but I'm, I'm going to use the same logic we used on the waste management. We'll see them.
That's fine, yeah. If the rest of the council feels the same way.
My position. Okay. Okay.
Can we discuss it at a future meeting?
But I, it's easy enough for me to put them in teams or any, however, whatever format you want. Because again, I have all five in digital format.
I understand. That's my opinion.
So do y'all want hard copies? Do we make copies for you or do you want us to scan it or put it on the team so that you can see it?
I'm good with the teams when I get access to it.
Yeah, you should have access hopefully tomorrow.
It's sitting in my office.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I've had them all.
Okay, thank you.
The surface.
Sir, yes, sir.
Is there something else you can investigate to give us more information that doesn't cost us any money as far as this merger? Because I heard Phil say, well, it doesn't cost us anything to go out and do X.
It doesn't cost us anything to go negotiate the contract with them?
No.
And let them tell us what these different phases are going to cost.
But you decide at that point that you're going to have a contract with them.
If you decide that you're going to have a contract. You have an obligation. I mean, when you enter into the contract, you have to sit down and, and they give you fees. And these are what we want. These are milestones. That's all in negotiation.
Under, under the, just like I explained, so we, we're clear. Under the Professional Procurement Act, you choose who you believe is the most qualified. And then the second phase is negotiating the fees. So yes, you, you have to choose one before you can negotiate pricing. And that's where I'm at here is, I don't think we're ready to choose one. That's my opinion.
Another option available to you is if you want to establish a committee, no more than two council members to take this on as a project, review the RFQs. And when we went through the, um, selection of Simple City, it was done by a committee. Um, I'm trying to remember who was on the committee. But there, anyway, there's, only, only because you're new and you're here tonight.
Sure, sure.
And I know you have a lot of experience in doing some of this, but that, I'm just making aware, there are several options available to, available to the council tonight. Just give, you, tell me what you'd like to do.
Well, I'm, I'm very familiar with that. I have a seven-member board where I work. And I have a three-member operations committee that reviews and makes recommendations.
But maybe another.
I do follow that.
Yeah, so that may be another idea that y'all could pursue if you want to do that.
Is there any further discussion?
We've got six minutes.
Or I guess we could, as you suggest, get, get this information out to council. So they can look at it and we can discuss it next meeting if we think we need to have a, um, a committee, get together and look at these things, interview maybe, and we will discuss that. And then, um, and then that group could bring it back to council as a recommendation of.
That, that's what I'd like to do, kind of like.
And then go and negotiate.
For now, kind of table it, get, get more information for the council, then we can proceed from there.
Do you like the committee idea?
I do, I do, but everybody has to be in agreement on that because, I mean, no, the committee's not binding. They just come back a recommendation. Uh, I don't have a problem doing that. It kind of helps, it, it, it could help, uh, reduce any back and forth time. I'm, I'm fine with that.
I still want to know the, the financial aspects of this.
Sure.
And where the rest of the money could be spent if not to this and so forth. So even if you come back with this company versus that company, I'm not still saying no until I understand our financial situation to up to continue this process versus a million road surveys we've had, thirty thousand a pop, and then we don't do anything.
Well, you're getting into prioritization of the council. And when I, you know, when we've done prior CIPs, we prioritize projects and we funded the CIP where, where the council could. So, I mean, what, I would just tell you, I mean, that, ultimately, Bob, the things you're bringing up, it, that comes down to what is the council want to prioritize? And we can certainly make that a part of our discussion when we have our budget.
But I don't know how much we have to prioritize with.
Yeah, and again, that can be some, something we talk about in the budget workshop, which we're going to plan tonight.
That's why I would wait until that point in time.
I don't have a problem with, with the review committee. Again, I, 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 I'm with you is I don't, I'm not prepared at all to give a green light for the project until I know where the funds are coming from. But as far as getting to the point of, of a design, uh, like I said, I've done this before where we've had professional service due to design. And it basically sets on a shelf until we get the funding to move forward. So I don't have a problem in proceeding with something like that.
I'd be fine with that.
Okay, so, uh, as a committee, uh, Phil, Houston, you got time? Okay, if, if anybody has an objection, I'm trying to respect your, your word.
No, I appreciate it. I don't, I don't want to be on this committee.
Okay, uh, Phil and, and Houston, if you guys could work with Scott, kind of review them and make a recommendation back to the next council meeting? Would that be okay?
Yes, and then we will, and staff will get everybody.
Do, do we need a, do we need a motion to do that, Deborah? Or can we just, we want to create a, a committee of these two council members to work with Scott to come back with a recommendation to the council at the next meeting? Okay?
He can just leave the meeting and walk him back.
Okay, then that's it. We'll, we'll move off from there. Thank you very much for all the discussion. Appreciate that.
Three minutes.
What do we have left?
I think there's future agendas, right?
Well, actually, the, the, the city council liaison reports. Do we want to go through those or we want to kind of hold off till the next meeting so everybody talks at one time?
To you, Mayor.
I would just assume, because I'm trying to approach to my nine o'clock target.
Those reports don't take there. I can delay a minute.
Well, let's, let's move on then, okay?
Will you read the item, please?
Yes, sir, I sure will. What, what item is that?
Nine.
Nine.
Okay, I've got to find it. Okay, city council liaison reports. Let's go to the airport advisory board, May fifth, twenty twenty five meeting.
All right, Arnie De Losi, uh, briefed that he is still working on, uh, the STEM program in regards to getting a product out there for air, aviation, aviation stuff. And that he's reaching out to talk with a big foundation in San Antonio to see if they will help build it. Fuel sales in April, forty-six thousand dollars, uh, was the total. The ramp has been fenced off to prevent non-aviation traffic on the runway. New camera systems installed, able to zoom in and provide video if needed. They're waiting on the vendor to provide training to airport staff. Uh, border patrol has been very interested, uh, at local airports of any strange, uh, airplane landings at night.
Strange?
Strange.
Yeah.
Uh, so, yeah, so border patrol's being active on that. Uh, and according to the, the guys out at the airport, they haven't seen or heard anything. So we're, we're not there, but they said to keep our, our eyes out. Uh, chevrons are now painted on the taxiways. Fuel contract is expiring. Uh, the company that was doing it is no longer doing it. And so they are inquiring to Basco for them to take care of it. Uh, the farmer's contract will expire in December. But he has said that he intends to renew it.
Is that the dry land or the irrigated land?
It could be both.
Okay, thank you.
USDA funds has two hundred thousand dollars left over. Uh, Mike, the airport, uh, manager said, uh, asked that the, come up with the top three priority projects that, uh, that, that could go towards, and Mike is going to reach out to Congressman Gonzalez with Arnie's help to see about getting those remaining two hundred thousand dollar funds, uh, switched over to another project. That way we can get that, another project taken care of. Uh, we have three individuals on the board that are up for renewal. Two have definitely said they're going to be renewing and will be getting with Deborah to get the paperwork, um, to do their renewal. Uh, the safety issues occurring out on the airport road again. A couple of years ago, when baseball season was going on, people would park on the far side of the road near the fencing for the airport. And little kids would be darting across this road and everything and almost getting hit. Um, they aren't looking, they aren't paying attention to the no parking on this side, on this side for the signs or anything. So it's a big safety hazard. Um, last time officers had to go out, they had to issue tickets and everything to get people's attention. Chief is working with the baseball people to rectify this problem because we don't need a child hit. So that, that was a big safety issue that was, uh, occurring again. Otherwise, that's it.
Hey, thank you. The library advisory board.
One quick question, Shana. You said the agricultural leaks. The farmer, that, that was a, a set time with a two-year option or five-year option. He, so he's indicating he wants to exercise his option.
Correct.
So we're not going to go out and review it?
Correct, correct.
That, that's the question.
Okay, thank you. Library advisory board of May one, twenty twenty five.
All right, thank you. And a question from council first. Uh, did you make these for everybody?
Uh huh. They all have.
Okay, in your package is a, is a report from the library directions that part upon all the programs they, they participate in and the number of people that are doing it and the various outrages and so forth they're making, or they're doing. And, and a large portion of that is part of the library board meeting. And so she usually normally present this to you at the second meeting of the month. But the, with the library liaison report comes at the first meeting of the month. And so I'm wondering, would you like me to not report on the things Mrs. Farley's working on? And just have it come to you as a department report like the others do at the second meeting of the month?
Yes.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, very good. Uh, the, uh, of course, you've got a, a full group now on the library board and they're all quite energetic. Uh, some of them are learning to work themselves into the group as a cohesive whole. And so they're working on a, a new set of operating rules and standards in order to have a good conductive, or, or good productive meetings. They worked again on the, the budget proposal and Mr. Dixon is going to be there at the next meeting uh, to, to listen to that. I think also maybe Ms. Mckee or you're going to meet with the library or personnel and I'll do my best to be there too. But, uh, they're hard at work and they're a great group of people and I see good things for the library. And, and I know Mr. Dixon put something in the package tonight to go to the city hall about a potential expansion of the library, uh, next year, but that'll be discussed, I believe, at, at the budget process.
That's it.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Planning zoning, April ninth, twenty twenty five.
Six thirty. Meeting opened, public comments. Joe Holeshouse, Mickey Holeshouse, Tammy Alexander, the basic consensus of those comments were they had just received the updated version of the UDO the day before, which was an issue, which was ongoing. Uh, the minutes, there was a little question about the meeting at minutes of March seventeenth, P&amp;Z. Um, and we asked that the approval of the minutes be tabled as appears to be in conflict with the minutes did not match. Um, and it, it taken over nine months to record the minutes earlier that meeting. The minutes were approved. Um, public hearing on Alsatian Oaks, Rihanna Soto, um, statement and presentation. Uh, the school site was removed from there, which is approximately sixteen acres. Open space has been changed, but unsure where the original space is going to be allocated. Street sections, no layout change. Alsatian Oaks requested changes to sidewalks from five to four feet. Does that match existing? Um, Alsatian Oaks requested change from a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five feet to trigger exits at that time. We know that didn't end up happening. But again, public comments on that at six fifty-three. Julie Seale Brock, if I, if I'm spelling it right. Linda Nguyen, Jen Andromat, Matt Wisler. Basically commenting on the hundred to a hundred and twenty-five feet, why we wanted to keep it at one hundred. Um, Ms. Nguyen questioning the change from a hundred and twenty, twenty-five feet, et cetera.
You're saying feet, but it's actually number of houses.
I'm sorry, number of houses.
You're good. I know you know what you're talking about, but.
Thank you. I was writing fast.
Yeah.
Uh, public hearing ended at seven eleven. Board discussion. Engineer Vincent, I didn't get his last name because that was a little bit stressful.
I don't know him. Uh, he's a representative. Yeah, he's representative of Alsatian Oaks.
Alsatian Oaks.
And he explained the five to four feet max existing. Also stated the hundred and twenty-five houses would trigger two access points. The school site, sixteen acres, question from the board. You have it in writing that the school district does not in fact want that. Maximum lot would not, would, no, that's, go on. Alsatian Oaks outcome, P&amp;Z voted to approve but left access point at one hundred feet, I mean, one hundred houses, excuse me. And requested, requested written notice from the school district. They do not in fact want the, this school allotted acres. Uh, public hearing on comprehensive plan. We had Claudia Holeshouse, Jim Welch, um, excuse me, Mickey Holeshouse, Tammy Alexander, Jim Welch tabled until time to work with the UDO. Then the public hearing on the UDO. Um, now our mayor Alexander read Councilman Bob Lee's comments into the record, questioning changes in park land and civic space, questioning short-term rental codes. And, and Mr. Lee, if I get anything wrong, let me know. Um, questioning home-based businesses in Casterville, questioning historic district changes. UDO is not complete. Ms. Andromat, um, it's told a store Casterville will not be affected by the UDO, but there are holes in the document that would not allow for high-density development need to be addressed. Ms. Alexander, more or less the same thing, except reco, no UDO, PK applies outside the river and designed for new development. Ms. Youngman, again, same thing. Helen Delavan explained that the too much money was already spent on the process and asked that the UDO be approved and moved forward. P&amp;Z board discussion. Language in the UDO needs to read over three acres rather than one or more anchored, acre. Change the language from one or more to more than three. Water rights still mandated, need to calculate amount of water rights in detail. Civil space, if not church or school, requires rezoning. Castro Street, multi-use and rezoning. ADU special use permit, no. Kyle McBay requested updated chart like the one the mayor sent out. Again, this is getting old news. UDO is the precursor to the zoning map. UDO not complete. Jim Welch explained that we're going to table the UDO and advised that the council should not vote without full representation of council members who are in Japan. That's it.
Right, and, and just to add to that, uh, P&amp;Z, I believe it's on their agenda tomorrow to discuss, consider, uh, action on the comprehensive, comprehensive plan and the UDO. There's a meeting tomorrow evening. Okay, uh, Historic Landmark Commission, would that be you, Phil?
That'd be me. They, that, uh, things are.
That'd be me. They've met. Things are going good. They're turning the ins and outs of council's direction to them to follow the guidelines in accordance with law. And some were approved, some were said no way Jose, and some were said you need to come back and tell us a little bit more information. So it's, the process is working.
Good. Anything else, sir? That's it? Okay, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, April 16th.
All right, so the Parks and Rec Board met at their regular called meeting on April 16th. Alternate Ben Jean was called on to fill an absent seat during the meeting. They discussed the Lions' master plan update. Since they were not noticed for action, they intend to approve this item as part of consent agenda at their next meeting. They discussed grant applications and the decision-making of how to spend those grants and the possibility of requiring altruistic grant writers to speak to the board or coordinate through the Friends of the Regional Park, but no decision was made on that. Helen Delevin with the Friends of the Regional Park had nothing to say, which she felt was amazing. Then she did say a few things. Noticeably that the regional park has seen over ten thousand two hundred documented service hours since 2007. And they discussed the community center's impact on the pool schedule, which they plan to post on the city website and as they have more information on the fence around the construction site. Regional Park soccer field irrigation has been tested. Hookups to the wastewater treatment plant were easier than expected due to an undocumented valve on the side of one of the tanks. So someone was thinking ahead putting it there, but not ahead enough to write down that they put it there. They discussed the possibility of, in the future, binding the contract money to maintenance of the facilities those leads use. And they are actively working on finalizing the updates to their master plan, hoping to get it to us in the next month or two.
That's it?
That's all. It took me slightly more than a minute.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Well, that leads us next to the discussion of new agenda items. And unless you guys have something very specific you want to talk about, I would encourage you to get any requests for agenda items sent to Scott. Sir?
Yes, I have too, since this is the time. I'd like a discussion on the comparison between, and I'll give this to you, Deborah. A discussion of the comparison between developers' cost, design, cost, design flexibility, city annexation, and interest in building under the proposed UDO requirements versus the current subdivision requirements. Did you understand what I was saying there?
Developer design?
I'm, I'm looking at developers. Are, are they happy with more inclined, less inclined to develop in the way we want them to under the current ordinances we have or under the UDO? Looking at the factors that would come into play for them to make a decision. And so it's kind of a philosophical discussion amongst us, but also let us know how they feel about those requirements. The next one is a proposal to install a dirt berm and sod in the city right of way for flood mitigation for a house at the east end of Athens Street. Mr. King and I have been out there several times and looked at it, and Mr. Dixon's been there. But this appears to be an extremely low-cost way to, to meet some of the requests of the person that lives in the house that gets flooded every time the water, the house does it at the property when it rains quite a bit. So this would be using our own dirt, only expense to us would be time and maybe some sod, and the rest of it would be up to the, to the resident.
When is the workshop for?
I have a list of items under, under future agendas. I can read what we, what we have from tonight. I'll go as quick as I can, Mayor. So including the two that I was just given, we're bringing back solid waste. We're doing water conservation slash utility policy. That's one from a couple of, probably a month ago. The SCADA system, we'll bring, bring that next meeting. New signup form, that was from tonight, so Deborah and I will work on that. Look at the ordinance, ordinance is compliance with state law, so I'll work on that. We'll get you a cell phone and work on a policy and process where anybody who has a state, make sure that, maybe they have a sign, sign off on something acknowledging what that looks like and helping them retain records. P&amp;Z appointments, we mentioned that earlier. Meet with City Hall. I'll be meeting with the committee, and then we will bring back City Hall RFQ and bring back, I think that's it. That's, that's actually my list. And then, in addition to, we need to schedule our budget workshop. We've talked about tentative dates with most of you. It looks like next Wednesday, which would be the 21st, is the most amenable day for all involved. This would be an all-day workshop. We'll have various, present to you for thirty to forty minutes apiece today, and we'll feed you.
You need it at what time?
Will you tell me? We would like to, as possible, start eight AM.
At nine AM.
Okay, so nine, nine AM.
I can't do it all the way.
Wait.
I just can't do it.
Bob will not be here all day.
Okay.
I can't do it.
You're talking, the 21st.
I'm at the 21st.
It's Wednesday.
Training building code exists in city council chambers.
Yeah, that's at one o'clock. That'll be actually not, we're, we're going to reposition them into my office so they can use the train. I understand.
Next four people to be here for a call, because that would be considered a special meeting.
You're right.
So what, what time do you talk about?
So lose your.
Nine AM, start at nine AM, Dave, we'll start at nine, and I'll give you a schedule before it looks like.
I, I can make it work, as long as we get it done in one day.
I'll give you a schedule, but three o'clock, three o'clock.
Three o'clock.
Nine to three, something like that. Preference.
Pizza, chicken?
Yeah, usually it's pizza, chicken, sub sandwiches, but we could do something special.
What burger?
We're embarrassing Bruce.
Oh, we have it all the time for meetings.
Oh, they do? Okay. Council workshop.
Next Wednesday, 21st, start at nine AM. I'll get you a schedule, Mayor, and, and you can look at it. I need to time it out. First, I wanted to set the date and get a start time. If you have a start time at nine, we'll end as early as possible. The, the presentation for you all, your information, what they're going to present on, because again, the idea is this is a policy. They're not going to present draft budgets. What they're going to present is, here's what our, you're, you're paying for, like, here's, here's what our current costs and our current service levels. Here's someone else. Here's what a budget cut would look like. It was forced to cut, and I, I gave them a 12%. They had to cut everything from my department's adjustments. Is there, are there, would like to see? That can involve capital. We've talked about that. So that's, that's the idea, and each of them has about thirty minutes, and it's hopefully six to eight slides per service area. John Gomez is the one that has the most to present, because he has five, you know, four utilities and, and streets to present. So, but that's the goal, and ideally, it's just to get solicit feedback and, and hopefully germinate some ideas. Yes.
So, oh, go ahead.
Ma'am, go ahead, because I do have a question.
So the top three projects, that, that's their priority, so.
Whatever, but I, I, I caught it. I, I came across an email today from the Department of Treasury that we may owe back seven hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. But, but then it was a paperwork issue, so I would like to know what that money was spent for.
That was SLRF.
I know, I know.
It was, it was police salaries.
So if, I, I don't want to get on a tangent.
Sure.
If it was police salaries, then what happened to the budget in police salaries?
Yeah.
But, but that's not an item for discussion. We'll talk later.
Yeah, we can. I'll definitely update you. You're from.
One last question. One that was books and data, do you want us to?
No, takes them with you, but they are.